Good morning and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for the District of Squamish for Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. Akam Squalenkweiskelektia, Plasko Homish Aweeme. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. I am councillor Doug Race, acting mayor this month, and will be chairing this meeting. And we have actually an interesting agenda, and I'll ask council to move adoption of the agenda. Councillor Herbert, second to councillor Pedengill, all in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is staff reports, council parental leave policy. Ms. Pollack.
Thank you. Good morning, council. My name is Sherwin Pollack. I'm the manager of legislative services. So I don't have a presentation today. It's more of a council discussion. There's some information provided in the memo. I just wanted to provide some clarification around what district staff receive for maternity and parental benefits. So that is through the VC Employment Standards Act. So maternity leave entitlement is 17 weeks paid, and that's through employment insurance. And then standard parental benefits to a maximum of 35 weeks. That must be claimed within a 52-week period. And two parents can share the 35 weeks. And then fairly new is the extended parental benefits, which can be paid for a maximum of 61 weeks. Must be claimed within a 78-week period. And the benefit rate for that is 33% versus 55%. And then I also just wanted to clarify, as far as benefits go, staff are -- benefits are covered while staff are off on maternity and parental leave other than short-term disability. They pay for that upfront.
Let me just be clear about that. So 71 weeks, did you say?
Uh, 61 weeks.
61, a big part. So legislatively, we're required to have a certain period, but we have a benefit plan that goes beyond that legislative period up to 61 weeks?
I believe so.
So a staff member leaving would get 61 weeks of paid leave?
I believe so.
But not through us? That would still be through -- or you're talking just the benefits? The pay comes from EI?
The benefits are paid through the district.
Yeah, the benefits are paid through the district except for short-term disability, which the employee has to pay themselves while they're off, if they want coverage.
That's another issue. But the period of time that -- so a certain part of it is paid for by EI. But does our benefit package top it up? Is it all EI?
No, it's all EI. There's no top-up.
And you either collect 55% of your pay or 33% of your pay, depending on the length of the leave you choose. So if it's just the one-year leave, it's 55, and if it's the year-and-a-half leave?
Our council members entitled to EI?
I don't believe they -- I did look that up, and it looks like there are CPP deductions, but not EI deductions.
Yes. Kind of a moot point for us.
So are there any questions on this point, council? I was gonna try to silence this a little bit. I've got a series of different issues. And I think the goal is to give staff direction on where we might want to go with this. But are there any questions just on this last point?
Well, in terms of like what staff are entitled to, just curious about the rules around same-sex couples. If both partners work here, can they both take the benefit? If it's limited to biological parents, or would guardians or adoptive parents qualify?
I believe that all applies. Only one parent can be -- through employment insurance can be collecting at one time. The parental benefits can be split, but they can't both be collecting at the same time.
So anything else? Okay. So when I was going through the memo, I tried to hit some decision points. And let me just rattle them off so you can sort of see where I was going with this. So the first issue would be leave, yes or no. Would we entertain a policy or not? And if we say no, that's pretty much the end of the discussion. But if we say yes, then it raises other questions. Is the mother or the parental, or both, or either? Would we extend it to the non-birth parent? Second is the length of the leave. Third, would it be paid? And if so, for what length of time? Same length as the leave? Fourth is the benefits that that person would be entitled to normally. Would they be paid by the District of Squamish during the leave? And this is the medical extended care, et cetera, which requires a contribution from the district, as we're probably all aware. So would that be paid by the district during the leave for mother, parent, or both? And then it was already covered. What happens if -- Is that us? What happens if both parents work for the district? So I was gonna try to focus on this, and other questions may come up, and we can answer them as we go along, or put them at the end of the list. Or if others have questions, by all means. But I think the goal is to try to give staff some direction on where to go with this. So let me start off going through it in that order. Leave, yes or no? Council, open to your --
Given the median age of our community is 37 and a half, I believe, and we're trying to create councils that represent our demographic, I think that this kind of policy is important if we want younger people to run for public office. We're the only level of government that doesn't have these rights enshrined in policy, and I think it's time this come. So I'm in favor of the policy.
Ms. French.
Yes, plain and simple.
Well, I had a few thoughts about this. The one is if you have, say, getting a serious car accident or something, you can ask for the leave of council, and it's at the discretion of council. And just given that there are only seven of us and where the quorum requirements are, I was wondering if it made sense to have a caveat where there's, you know, if there's only -- if no one has taken a leave, whether due to birth or a car accident or something, or if only one person has, then it's sort of automatic. But if there's two people already gone for whatever reason, then it still requires a discussion of council, maybe. And then falling on that, you know, raised in my mind the whole idea of should we be approaching the province, maybe through UBCM, about thinking about alternates at the municipal level, so that in terms of dealing with these things effectively, we have some sort of mechanism if someone needs to step away from council for other genetic reasons?
Ms. Pedengill.
A big part.
He has the haircut. I think this is a yes in the general concept, and then the council opinion points. There's also other issues we need to look at that flow from there. I'm sure there's an unacceptable version of that, and I'm sure we could arrive at an acceptable version of it. But in the basic concept, yes, we should be parental in time, figured out, I guess. And I have lots of questions about what that means as we go down, but just that first decision point, I absolutely think that this is something we should have.
Yes, I agree with the same in principle support quoting here, and as has already been said, having a policy in place would potentially allow a broader segment of the population to consider running for office. But I also note the lack of municipalities around the province that have engaged with this, and the effort in 2016 to bring it before the UBCM and the resolution that did not -- was not endorsed. So I wonder whether, not instead of, but alongside, we might consider approaching the UBCM, whether in the form of a resolution next year, or anyway to stimulate not only discussion, but seeking further assistance on the part of our local government body provincially.
Just for clarity, in the book, there was no recommendation to endorse, but on the vote, it was endorsed.
I see.
The province hasn't taken action on it.
I see.
There was a very clear endorsement, I believe, to enact a provincial policy. In the meantime, we are one of the youngest cities in the province, so people aren't thinking about this because it's not necessarily their demographic. It is for us, and I don't think we should wait for the province, because it could be never that they decide to act on this, and we should be ready before the next election.
Ms. Pedengill.
One other thing that came to mind, and I don't know if it requires being written into law, because I'm not sure we have any desire or means to constrain it, but maybe it's worth explicitly endorsing the idea of having your child in council chambers, or to be able to breastfeed, or those sorts of things in a meeting that might go alongside some of this.
I'm not sure that there's anything preventing it, except to call the chair at the moment, but just to keep general order in the council chamber. So possibly disrupted by crying babies and things of that nature. But otherwise, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent that. Just for my part, I tend to agree with the idea of leave as well. But my first thought when I saw that was similar to councillor Pedengill, you know, what happens if you start to have tie votes and critical issues and leave and stuff like that? And I think we just kind of have to get by that. The thought that we wouldn't make quorum, that three people would be somehow out of action, is an extreme case. And I can't quote you the law on this, but I remember from one of the orientations that I went through in the past, there is a provision where a municipality could apply to court to have the quorum reduced to allow a vote in extreme circumstances. And there's a case from Lecrutney somewhere where the majority of council was members of the same golf club, and a golf club issue came up. That's the classic case. So this would be something similar to that, I guess, if that ever happened. So I guess...
I just had a thought on that, though. If you're a staff person and you're off on maternity, you are collecting EI, you're not allowed to work. You just don't work, because you can't put in your time card. It affects your status of your EI, et cetera. But if you're a councillor who's off, or you know, whatever the determinant period of time, length of time is, maybe it's somewhere around the six-month mark and some quorum issue comes up, because council is -- would still theoretically be being paid through the stipend, there would be nothing really to prevent a one-off coming in, or a phone call in in a special circumstance to meet quorum. And, you know, if there was some kind of agreement or understanding ahead of the leave that, you know, after X amount of time, you may be called on to meet quorum, if there's a situation where others are also on. Some sort of process that might sort of get some leave context would be acceptable.
This is one of the ideas that I wanted -- why I want to confirm whether councillors would be entitled to EI or not, because I think we have to allow the flexibility that some new parents actually would like to get out of the house and come to a council meeting. That sounds exciting. So I think we don't need to overcomplicate the policy, but I think we should allow for that flexibility to attend over those six months if quorum or issues needed, or at their discretion. We don't want to keep them out. If they want to come every two weeks, that's fine with me. But I just, I don't want to design this policy for the worst-case scenario. I want to design it with the idea that we can be flexible, and we can make this work. I mean, my goodness, there's councillors on leave with pay because they've been charged with sexual assault. We're talking about giving people the right to be away for six months because they have a child. So, you know, I think we can manage this just through our own procedural bylaw, rather than overcomplicating this policy.
Ms. Pedengill, do you have a question?
Thank you.
I did see your hand up. I didn't get the names wrong.
For Mr. Mary Lee's point of just ways that we can handle this, the Whistler bylaw that was presented was remarkably lean. It didn't get into really too many what-ifs on going to quorums, or the whole council needs to leave, exercise this right at the same time, or all these different scenarios. It was very much just as lean as possible, and I'm sure their other bylaws came into play with just normal quorums and meetings and all the rest of them, as it -- and I'm curious, have they -- does anyone know if they've used this policy, any challenges that they have?
Just in terms of, are there different rules for contract versus long-term employees? And if you're on a, say, a one-year contract, how does the staff policy apply?
If it's a contractor and they can't fulfill the contract, I don't know what we would do for somebody. I don't know that we haven't had that situation arise. If there's individual contractor, I don't know what our recourse would be, but if it's a firm, like an urban systems or somewhere that's large, we would hope that they would provide us a fill-in to complete the contract.
Because that's, you know, one of the things in my mind is, I see council position a little closer to a contract position, in that it's more a short-term time. You can't -- we don't seem to see it as a career. Having said that, I think in general, we are transitioning to the side to short-term contract work, and maybe things why guaranteed basic incomes start to make more sense. And so I don't want to -- not to use this as an excuse not to do this, but it was an interesting, I guess, thing to wrap my head around.
Yeah, and let me just get a straw out of this, and some of these other things might come up as we get through the other questions. So just generally in favor of leave, yes or no?
This is a yes.
Yep. Okay. So it's yes unanimously on that point? These aren't resolutions, I'm just for staff direction. So the second question I had was the length of that. Sorry, I beg your pardon. The mother or the parental, or both? And I say that because in the policy, it seemed to distinguish, or the presentation of the report, it seemed to distinguish in some cases, just the actual maternal parent that would have the leave. Sometimes there's parental leave for the second partner. And the question is whether we would extend it to the second partner, just the first, and any issues arise around that. I mean, could, for example, if there was a councillor that was the mother, and the father worked for the district in some other capacity, would he also get leave at the same time? Would we care? Or rather?
I think in that second scenario, the other parent who works for the district is entitled to take their parental leave through EI as per the Quorum of Law. This, because we're not covered by EI and we can't claim those benefits, it would have to be just for the sitting council member. The other parent would have to pursue their parental rights through their EI program. So that's my understanding of how this would work.
So that clarifies the issue, then, and that is, do we extend this leave to just the maternal parent if it was a councillor, or to the other parent, even if she was a councillor?
I think any combination there is fine by me. We ran through some of the possible combinations of adoptee and same-sex and all that. And I think some people were the part -- those scenarios that were just discussed, where a partner has some benefit through their work or through legislation, or the councillor, I think those -- trying to put something in the police is some strange combos, is overcomplicating the matter. And I think all parental, parental figures.
Either one, in other words.
Either.
So I had councillor Pedengill, I think you had your hand up first, and then councillor French.
Yeah, just my thought, I mean, I think one of the underlying ideas behind this is gender equity, and so I think our language should reflect the expectation of, you know, regards of gender, parents having an equal responsibility for child rearing. So I think it's important to call, you know, regards of gender and the opportunity and the expectations.
Councillor French.
I agree. I'd like to see our policy gender-neutral, parental leave. Maternal, let's just call it parental leave.
I tend to agree with that. Any dissenting views? So extend to both possibilities? The length of time? Some examples have been six months. Does council have an opinion on that?
I felt the six months was quite reasonable. It is, this is an interesting topic that we have all taken on, and the actual term is quite short. And I think that six-month time period is reasonable. It is less than is provided, as we heard earlier in other sectors of the community, but...
If you get EI.
Yeah, but I think six months is a good starting point for this, at any rate. And I did have a point, as we get deeper into that, I'm like, so if we're coming up to an election, I would imagine that if we had a month left, then it's just that month. It's not, you know, carrying through anything. So back to sort of councillor Pedengill's contract work sort of idea there, as far as thinking about it.
Yeah, interesting point. And so I guess it would require that person to be elected within their term, or an extension of their term. So if somebody went on leave three months before an election and was re-elected, the term could go for the next three months. If they weren't re-elected, that's the end of the three months. That's the end of the word. I think that, yeah, I think that's kind of inherent. And I'm kind of landing in six months myself. Does anybody have any different views? Well?
Well, I like six months, and I saw you trying to jump into the conversation.
Sometimes circumstances arrive with the birth of a child that might require more than six months' leave, or something happens with the mother or parent. The wording in the Whistler policy comes from the community charter, and if council wants to land on six months, could we add some additional wording after that, you know, unless at the leave of council person, the community charter section?
Yeah, that's what I think would apply, and so, I mean, we could have language in there, you know, further extensions of leave of council or something like that, because we would always have the ability to extend, if I understand the legislation correctly, for any medical issue. So six months, we're good?
With that wording?
With that extra language?
I just, I don't have a strong objection to it, but I would, at some point, it would be good to understand, like, is six months, is there some sort of evidence that that's too short, too long, just the right amount? I'm not sure if that's just an arbitrary number, or does that fit just everyone else's policy, and that's what we're picking, six months?
Yeah.
Well, there's European countries that provide for, like, two years. The United States provides six weeks. We provide a year plus a little bit if you opt for that. So I think what we're trying to do is establish a reasonable policy that also gives some flexibility, that if the parents run into some challenges, they can ask for another leave of council to be gone longer. But, you know, I'm sure there's evidence suggesting that we should make it two years, but I'm not sure that that's reasonable for an elected official. But I think we can have family-friendly policies and create some flexibility in the wording of our policy to make sure they know that we'll support them to the best of our ability, and they ran for elected office and will have a job to fulfill. But I'm not sure that you're going to square that with all the different kinds of parental leaves that exist around the world.
I'll go to councillor Herbert. Do I want to go to staff first? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, for comparison, the Ontario legislation is 20 weeks, and the Toronto Act is 20 weeks.
Sure. Councillor French.
Thank you. For most of us, and I'm sure this is a portion of what we do in our lives, so if a councillor has a normal job, this is applicable to me as a small business owner, but if, they would be entitled to that year of leave from their job. So it would be a slow reintroduction to the workforce, and they'd just be able to. So I think it's pretty, it's reasonable this time, and if the, yeah, so there's other supports available, this is just a portion of what we all do, and I think that's six months, which, interesting that they measure it in weeks, is that a more accurate way to measure it from a...
Sometimes it's a part of the month.
Yeah, 26 weeks or something.
Maybe 26 weeks.
So I'm hearing six months. Is there anybody dissenting from that? And the related question is, are they paid for the entire period? Which is something we have to decide, it may be obvious, but I'll suggest that they are. Is there any other view on that? Nope? So they are paid for the entire period, then? And benefits is the other issue. There are certain circumstances where they don't get benefits, or they would have to personally contribute to their portion of the cost of the benefits during that period of time. Our staff, correcting if I'm wrong, have their benefits paid for by the district during the period of parental leave?
That is correct, other than short-term disability.
Yeah, and we don't get short-term disability, so that's out on the table. So any views on that, council?
We should pay benefits.
We should pay benefits. Any dissent to that? So are there any other questions that pop up in staff's mind? Go ahead.
Just notice, do you want to include a notice period in the policy?
Oh, right, good idea. So the staff person would give the district period of notice, what was the Whistler policy?
It's four weeks.
Four weeks? Any views on that, council?
That seems, that four-week period seems reasonable. This is something that you see coming from more than four weeks out, so generally speaking, with maybe some sort of provision in there if there is like a premature birth or something like that, which I imagine that the leave of council would complicate, obviously, a medical situation, but...
I think, yeah, so if it's a four-weeks absence, extraordinary circumstances, something like that.
Two things on the notice. Do we care when the leave starts in relation to birth? Like, if they prefer, like, I'd rather take it four months before my expected birth date to be ready. Is that acceptable, or are we saying, like, you can't start your leave until the baby's born, or...
My understanding is that's not the way the policy works. It would be the choice of the parent. I'm hardly an expert in this, but I have seen, as an employer, staff people have to take off three months before birth and have a very quiet lifestyle prior to birth because of other complications. So I don't know that that's something we can dictate in a policy.
The other thing, and this is more in terms of, maybe not in the policy, but how we speak about this, and the dialogue you want to have with the public, but I was wondering, like, we, if you're in a car accident, serious car accident, you can hopefully leave the council, you need some time to recover, and that would be unexpected, and the electorate wouldn't have any expectation, knowing beforehand what's going to happen. If someone's committed a crime and going into the election without telling anyone, people wouldn't know, but they'd be pretty PO'd when they found out, and would really want the person out of there. When you're running for office, you may or may not know you're going to get pregnant, it may or may not be planned. What do we think about the public's expectation to be notified, especially in the case of a planned pregnancy?
The public has no business in the bedrooms of politicians, full stop. If I am a young person in my twenties, and I want to be a politician, and I want to serve multiple terms, I am not putting my family plans on hold while I serve eight, 12, 16 years of office. I think that's unreasonable. I think that our community wants to see people at this table that represent them, and that should, going forward, include people that are in childbearing years. And I don't think it's fair for us to say, in order to be a politician, you have to put your family plans on hold. The Prime Minister of New Zealand just had a baby in office. Pretty sure she knew she was going to have babies before she ran for Prime Minister. So if she can run a country and be a parent, I think someone can be a municipal councillor in Swamish, and we don't need to be concerned how the public feels about whether someone wants to have a baby in office. That's why this policy is here. We're basically saying, we invite you to run if you're a young person and of childbearing years, that who can represent our community. So, like, I can kind of see where you're coming from, and we have no business in the bedrooms of people that want to run for elected office.
It's discriminatory.
Yeah. Counselor French?
Yeah, I support the four weeks, and I agree with the mayor. And then one step beyond that is the electorate will decide. If a council member takes a parental leave, and ahead of that parental leave, they weren't doing a good job, and they seek reelection, then the voters get to decide.
And then the other point I'll make, that was in the Whistler policy, is this leave would be deemed to be leave granted by council to comply with the charter. So we can't come back later and say, I missed the meeting, get out of here, so.
The other piece that's not captured in the Whistler policy, which someone just closed our door.
Okay.
Wasn't there a seat in the office?
Yeah.
Tell her, please, tell Sasha that that's not wrong.
Is the fact that, and this was brought up at the UDCM discussion on the resolution, is that councillors who are chairing committees or appointed to committees or appointed to the SLRD that go on leave, I think it's reasonable for council to put another person in their place, but when they come back from leave, they should get all of their appointments back. So it's not like you leave and then you're taking over your appointment to the SLRD or the school board committee. Like, you get those back. We're just filling the room. So I think our council, our policy should spell that out.
Any issues with that?
You got, you need a spot?
I do. So I'll draft a policy and then create a policy to council.
Thank you. So I'm going to recess. We're getting to minutes until, going to recess, actually, until 10:02. And we'll get the next group in and start that up.
No, I could probably talk for hours, but, sorry.
Do you want the other?
Thank you, and I'm calling this meeting back to order. We were recessed early this morning. I'd like to welcome all of our new guests here. This is a committee of the whole meeting. I'm Counselor Doug Race. For those who don't know me, I'm the acting mayor this month, and our policy now is to have the acting mayor chair of the committee of the whole meetings. The mayor is still here. She guides me from time to time, kicks me under the table if I'm going the wrong way. So we've got a full agenda this morning, and we want to give as many people as possible a chance to speak. And so just outline where I think we're going to go with this. I'm going to start off in a minute with introductions. Then we're going to go to the mayor for an opening comment, then to staff, Ms. Gunn, who is our sustainability coordinator, then to police and bylaw for presentations on their part of it. And then I hope to get the PACs and the different stakeholders represented here a chance to speak, and try the limit to five minutes each. We've got a lot of people here. One person per PAC, and come to the table. Now, just so you know, these meetings are screened. You're on camera, and when you're speaking, we want you to speak into the microphones, so it's picked up by the soundtrack. That means you either go to the podium there when you're speaking, or come to the table, and these little black things on the table are microphones. But it doesn't pick you up in the audience, so over there it doesn't work at all. So if you have a question in the discussion that follows, put your hand up, and then be prepared to come to either the table or the podium. And if you are coming to the table to talk, that's fine, but once you're finished, I'm going to ask you to leave the table to make space for the next person and go back to the seat there. So I'll start off with introductions. We have, I'm just going to go around the room, I think. None of this will be picked up, but I'll start from our corner.
Portia from Garibaldi Highlands Elementary.
Mayor of Garibaldi Highlands Elementary.
That's Steve from the press. You don't need to talk to him. Right behind, Steve?
Stephen Pryor from Bracken Elementary.
And Heather from Bracken Elementary.
No good.
Lucy from Swamish Elementary.
Teresa Rollins, Swamish Elementary.
Christine Good from Public Health and here at Swamish Elementary, and resident of Panzim Run.
Okay.
And Tegan Bauter, resident of Panzim Run.
Brayden Morris, a new officer.
Sasha Banks, operations director and a parent of Garibaldi Highlands.
I'll start the point with Ian.
Ian Kent, school trustee, Swamish.
Rip Price, school trustee, Swamish.
Bahamas, name is secretary director, school district.
Ian, director of operations, school district.
Hillary Pink, chair of safety and learning connections.
Brayden Gordon, principal safety and logistics of the Swamish School.
Jill Merchant, Montecristo.
Erin Wether, principal Garibaldi Highlands.
Sarah Hane, vice principal of Swamish Elementary.
Kylie Drager, Valley Cliff Elementary School.
Gabriel Almelo, principal of Swamish Walder School.
Fiona Miller, from the PAC on infant Swamish Montessori School.
Leslie Gray, Swamish Montessori School.
Will Lake, from resident of Panzim Run.
I'm Julie Angelina Vannell, and I'm a resident of Panzim Run.
And one other person, second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ling Sharr, Agnes Hepat Elementary.
Thank you. Welcome. So I'll turn it over now to Mayor Elliott for a few opening comments.
I'll start by thanking everyone for taking the time out of their day, work days, I, you know, and I really appreciate you coming. So the Safe Routes to School initiative kicked off last term in council. We went through each of the elementary schools, aside from the independent schools, and created a Safe Routes to School map. We did this by going on walking tours with the kids, with our engineers, planning staff for bylaw, as well as teachers from the school and school district officials. And so I thought that was a really good start about encouraging our young people to walk, scoot, ride to school. And what, the bigger picture here is that we're trying to build a community that works for everybody, whether they're eight years old or 80 years old. And if we build it for these folks, then it works for all of us in between. So encouraging children to walk and bike to school requires not only their confidence, but the confidence and trust of their parents as well. And while we've put in place some engineering solutions to, you know, flashing crosswalks and change the format of intersections to make it safer for children, we know our enforcement staff through the RCMP and bylaw have been putting in place measures to help with this initiative. It's not the only thing we can focus on, and behavior change is an important part of the solution of sort of getting that critical mass of children and their parents with the confidence to let them do this, to get to school on their own. So today's invitation, and I thank you all for accepting it, was as a result of council receiving ongoing concerns from the community around a number of our schools. We have, Swamish Montessori is in a new location, and currently doesn't have any plan around it. The Waldorf School, while it was tangentially included in the Valley Cliff, it also didn't get its own sort of map. And so I wanted to use today with council and all of you to take stock of where we're at. So that's why we've asked planning to provide a bit of update on what's been completed and what is maybe still outstanding. RCMP and bylaw are here to talk about the enforcement activities that, that they've undertaken, and then engage with all of you, whether it's the school district, PACs, concerned parents, to figure out what else do we need to commit to, both in our schools and for the district itself, to really make this work, to really light the fire behind this initiative again. Because I don't want to lose track of it. It's something that, because we did it once and had a big push, it's easy to sort of let it fall by the wayside. And I wanted to reinvigorate the idea of Safe Routes to School with this new council, and also get all of your input again. So I think it's an important conversation. I think all of us are worried that we don't want to see a child get hurt because we haven't sort of cracked this nut and changed behavior in our community. So I think today is another really good starting point to see where we go to next. So with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to staff, Ms. Gunn.
Thank you.
Take it away.
So I'm Dora Gunn. I'm the sustainability coordinator with the District of Swamish. I manage transit and active transportation. I'm going to provide an introduction to this school planning program that we've been working on, and then I'm going to pass it over to Gareth Bradley and Chris Baker to review the enforcement activities that they've been working on as well. So the district has been working to promote Safe Routes to School for many years, but recently we completed the school travel planning project. It started in 2015 and ended in 2018, but we have been continuing to work on implementation actions, and we will continue to do that. We looked at our six public elementary schools, three starting in 2015 and three in 2016. The project was led by a consultant. They're called Haste BC, and they specialize in school travel planning. And the overall goal of the project is to increase active transportation to and from schools. School travel planning is a collaborative process that involves a variety of stakeholders. In Swamish, this included the students, parents, teachers, and principals at the schools, as well as the school district, municipal staff, RCMP, coastal health, Swamish Trail Society, and CN Rail. There was one overall stakeholder committee that guided the work in all the schools, and there was a more informal committee in each of the schools individually. The kids were involved through hands-up surveys in all the classrooms, so they got to put up their hand and say, you know, how they got to school, as well as take-home surveys that the parents filled out and returned. At each of the schools, there was a walkabout that all the stakeholders were invited to, and they divided up into little groups and walked all the different routes that the kids would travel into school, and they documented problems along the way and successes as well. And then there were also discussions at the PAC committees. So the outputs for each of the school were a best route map, a school travel plan, and an action plan. The best route map shows the safest ways to get into each school from each sort of direction. It also included something called Drive to Five, which is the location that is recommended that parents could drop their kids off and have their kids safely walk the last five minutes into school. The school travel plans outlined the overall process, as well as included all the results of the data collection and a prioritized set of recommendations. And then the full action plan is a very detailed set of actions that are recommended for all the different stakeholders that were involved. So a bit more detail on the action plans. The types of recommendations that were contained in there are things like infrastructure, so upgrading crosswalks, sidewalks, signage, that kind of thing, speeding and parking enforcement, consideration for future planning, that was mostly for the district, for District of Swamish, as well as ideas for education and events. And the district will have spent more than 1.5 million since 2016. That's including the 2019 budget on infrastructure projects across town. And I've just included two little pictures for their examples here. The sidewalk north of Mount Ham Elementary now connects all the way from the school to Garibaldi. And the lower picture is one of the pedestrian flashing beacons that's near Garibaldi Highlands Elementary. So I have included the full list of projects. I don't even know if you can read that. That's the full list of projects that we've worked on since 2016, specifically related to safe routes. I'll just mention the four that are coming up this year. So this year, we are widening a portion of Judd Road. Judd Road is very narrow and has very little space for kids to walk along either side. So we're widening one side and putting no parking there, so that kids can either bike or walk in that area. We're doing the same thing on Guilford. So there's a connection there that's missing. So we're going to widen pavement there and implement no parking on one side to allow kids to walk and bike in that zone. We're also upgrading our school zone signs, so we're making larger signs for the 30 kilometer an hour portion of the sign, as well as repainting many of the school zone markings on the pavement. We aren't going to repaint the ones where we're planning to repave again shortly, but we will repave anything that has decent condition pavement. So now I want to touch on a few areas of challenge. In many cases, there can be great improvements made with lower-cost solutions, so removing parking and creating these safe shoulders to walk on, or adding in new flashing beacons. But there are some areas where the challenges are greater and harder to solve. So three of these types of examples are Perth's Drive and Hans Way North. We consider those together. There is some speeding challenges on both within and outside of the school zone there. We have to look at that area as a whole, because if we do something on one of those roads, it'll affect what happens on the other road. People will go to the other road. So we need to look at an overall holistic solution for that area, and that could include traffic coming and/or sidewalks. The next one is the route from Valley Cliff to Hospital Hill to Swamish Elementary. So the best route map shows that route is going under the underpass and then all the way around to the school, which admittedly is quite a long route. It's longer than if you go to the Cleveland 99 intersection. However, the Cleveland 99 intersection is a relatively dangerous intersection on the highway, and Cleveland is not a designated bike route in our active transportation plan. So we are, we are looking for opportunities to try to improve the route under the underpass and shorten that to make it a comparable length to the other route and a much safer route. And finally, the route from Harris Road down Government Road to Garibaldi for kids heading towards Mount Ham Elementary. There's just not enough space there to create a safe zone without going into, there's a very large ditch there. And so ultimately, we'd like to see a sidewalk there, but it's just a very expensive project due to the large ditch there in the stormwater drainage. So that's just an example of some of the challenges that we're still facing, some of the areas we're still working on. I want, wanted to touch on some of the other actions that are included in the action plan as well, not just for the district. So some examples for schools and PACs are things like walking Wednesdays. So on walking Wednesdays, kids are all encouraged to walk to school, and parents can be involved by, in each neighborhood, one parent, one week can be the parent guide, and so all the kids from that neighborhood meet at one spot, and they're walked in by a parent. Another idea is the Big Buddy Walking Program, where you match up older kids, so grade sixes, say, with younger kids in a neighborhood, and they can walk kids regularly if they're all walking in together. That makes it easier for parents of younger children to feel comfortable sending their children walking. For school district 48, there were some recommendations on the school sites, one of them being improvements on the driveway up to C's got learning connections. So there's a driveway up there, and there was no safe place for pedestrians to walk, and they've actually created a safe spot now with some barriers there. For RCMP and bylaw, again, it's doing enforcement blitzes in the school zone problem areas. And then next steps for us at the district, we're going to continue to work on infrastructure improvements. Every year when we do our planning for our active transportation projects, we refer back to our school travel plans and try to incorporate those as much as possible. We're also proposing to update the best route maps in 2021. We've actually done enough improvements starting to be now that it would be a good idea to update those maps to slightly modify the routes. And then we also want to continue to support everybody else as they're implementing their actions. So if it's anything the district or the engineering department can do to support the other groups working on their actions, we definitely want to keep doing that. And that's me, and I'll pass it over to Gareth.
Mayor of council, thank you for having me here today. I appreciate your time. As your local police force, we strive to provide education prevention and obviously enforcement surrounding the issue of Safe Routes to School, school zones, speeding, and other issues such as parking. And we look to partnership with our bylaws officers and other community partners to help reduce those issues within, in that. There's a little bit of a challenge with our stats from a policing perspective, trying to capture, you know, an officer trying to write a ticket. It's not always conceptualized in a police file. It doesn't always really in a police file, so it's hard to pull some of those stats. But thanks to our SOA team that incorporates our school and municipal traffic, they worked together to create some files specifically last year, which outline some of the issues that are going on in our school zones. We've put in some processes in place as well to do proactive police enforcement in the school zones. to do proactive police enforcement in the school zones. So outlining which schools or school specific times during the week. And it rotates between all the different types of schools. So we do have a municipal traffic member, Constable Sado, who you might have seen out there. And our school liaison, Constable Morrison, who does proactive policing patrols in the school zones. We receive our files through police reports and also from the district complaints for the public. Specifically, last year, I can recall, there was a number of complaints around Brackendale. So we spent a lot more time proactive policing time in Brackendale. And this year, I can tell that there hasn't been as many complaints. So as you mentioned, it's trying to change the behavior. And how do we do that? Through our education prevention and enforcement options. Also through our SOA team, our community policing has a number of speed watch initiatives which focus on school zones. This is a little bit more conceptualized because they track their hours and how many cars are going through their speed zones. Last year, there was 50 volunteer hours spent in school zones. They checked 3,000 vehicles. 2,600 of those were at the speed limit or below within the schools, within the school zones, 30 km/h speed zones. In each instance, when we get these files, we'd like to do an evidence-based approach. So if we get a complaint from the member of the public and we start to see these trends, we'll send out an officer for a period of time. And they can track through a specific file their enforcement action and what they're seeing so we can have a better idea of understanding of what's going on in those zones. I know I only have two minutes, but I just wanted to share with you a file from last year that Constable Sado created, kind of conceptualizes this concept. On Mamquam Road, there's a small playground speed zone that most people know. There's some signage. He stopped about 30 vehicles going through that area that were speeding over the 30 km/h speed zone. But most people had lived there for a fairly long time and were not aware of that that section of Mamquam Road was a 30 km/h zone. So he went to our community policing coordinator, asked for some help with our speed watch volunteers. And they set up a project a few days later. And everything, all the speeds were reduced for that time. So for a week's period of time. There was a, he figured there was about a 90% drop in speed-related traffic enforcement there. So it's just working with our partnerships and trying to understand some of the problem areas. Each school has a different set of problems. For example, Garibaldi, there is a parking issue and a speeding issue off of Perth. So we try to take the complaints from the public and apply our policing measures with our partners. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Chris Baker. Bylaw supervisor. So from the bylaw side of things, the way that we've been helping out is to prioritize parking complaints in these areas. So that means making sure that travel lanes are clear of parked vehicles, bike lanes are clear of parked vehicles, and then pedestrian routes are clear and the cars aren't parked too close to crosswalks. We've also done some joint sort of education efforts with the RCMP that might come from the blitzes. So where there'll be an officer, a police officer and a bylaw officer kind of close, you know, on each end of a school zone and just talking to everybody that they can. And then I'm relatively new, but before I was here, there was a bylaw officer that was involved in the planning committee from the beginning. So we spoke this morning. And her perspective is that, yeah, this project is definitely worthwhile. It's going well. And then as it's been going, there's been a lot of opportunities where the bylaw team has been able to provide feedback where they're having ongoing issues to the engineering department. And they've had good uptake and there's good relationship there as far as taking the enforcement perspective to look for those design solutions to ongoing issues. And then they've also done some, in problem areas, varying of their enforcement strategies to try and use the tools that we have as effectively as possible to try and get the message out and change behavior. I think that's, yeah, that's everything from bylaw. Happy to answer any questions, though.
So I'll go to council. Do you have any questions or the speakers? Did you comment on that? No? Councilman?
Yes, I'd just like to note that with respect to the presentation from Dora Gunn, that the safe route to school issue from Valley Cliff to the schools, the three of them, does include that there is not a safe convenient pedestrian route down the escarpment to Scott Crescent, in addition to the issued Hunter Place, between Hunter Place and Pemberton. So just wanted to draw your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the Safe Routes to School program, just as a touch of history, I actually started my first term on council over 10 years ago. We went away to a retreat for a strategic plan and to set priorities. And one of the things that came out of that retreat was safe routes to school, which we've been, the success of council has been picking away at in bits and pieces over these years. From my perspective, it took a step up last term when we went through the Haste programs and the walkarounds. And I think the mood and the reason for this meeting is we want to keep that momentum and actually maybe even turn it up a notch or two. So there are constraints, there are budget issues, there's all kinds of issues. But I think we want to keep going in that direction. And that's what we're all here doing. The other thing I'll mention, I noticed some of you taking notes. If you're not aware, this is livestreamed on our website, but it's also archived. And it will be up on the website within a couple of days typically. So you can go back and it's on there for years, who knows how long. So you can go back if you want to check something, if you missed something. It's an available resource for you. And the final thing I'll say before going to you is you might have noticed that we're a little bit casually dressed today, arguably more stylishly than we normally are. But we're going for a council bike ride this afternoon, touring around a bunch of different infrastructure projects. And that's why we're so casually dressed today. It's not just the summertime. So I want to start going through speakers from the public. And I'm going to go, represented in front of us, we have PACs, we have administrators, and we have members of the public. And I want to, as far as possible, give you all a chance to express your thoughts on this. With the PACs, I think I've told most of you, try to have one person per PAC. And then if there's an administrator from that school, I'll ask the administrator to speak next, just to give a perspective if there's any change. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. We want to try to get everybody through. And then we'll have a bit more of a free-for-all and we'll see where that discussion goes. So I'm going to start off with, and I've just made a list rather arbitrarily, more or less than the list that I, in the order that I contacted you initially before the meeting started. We'll start off with the PAC from Squamish Elementary, then Brackendale and Mamquam. And so either come to the table or you can go to the podium. If you go to the podium, don't touch the microphone. It's a long story, but trust me, you don't want to touch the microphone.
I'm coming to the table.
And if you come to the table, if you could identify yourself, the street you live on, not your address, just for the record, please.
Okay.
And who you represent.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Teresa Rolle and I represent Squamish Elementary PAC. My daughter is grade one at Squamish Elementary. And I want to reflect Karen's comments regarding building cities for eight and 80-year-olds. It means we build cities for everyone. I live up on Northridge Drive on Hospital Hill. And I'm a bike advocate. And my daughter is seven and she's the wobbly bike rider. And so I really want to create a town where she can bike to school in a safe way. And more recently, we've been leaving our bikes at home because I've felt like it has been pretty unsafe to do so. So I know Dora identified the route from Valley Cliff to Squamish Elementary as one of the areas of concern. I know there's been a lot of time and money put into developing the underpass. And as Dora touched on, the route doesn't necessarily connect to Squamish Elementary. It goes through an industrial area across the train tracks. And right now, crossing Lager's Lane onto Pemberton to go around Shopper's Drug Mart. So it's a pretty, it's a long, circuitous route. And there's a lot of bus logging traffic and things like that. So I find that most people, most people who are biking cross at Highway 99 in Cleveland. And there's a lot of, well, there's different types of behaviors happening on the part of people who ride their children to school. So some of my areas of concern are the islands, overcrowding of islands, as well as the behavior at the crosswalks. People are riding through the intersections on their bikes. Very few people do push their bikes across. And then the spot, the sidewalk adjacent to McDonald's, which has been identified as a connector route, is where people bike. The road, so we just need to, people are doing all sorts of things. We just need to know what to do and communicate that for people. So with the G Mar development at the corner, there's already a lot of congestion. The bus stop has been moved closer to McDonald's. And so we have students from three schools trying to access, use that sidewalk, including the cyclists. So the bus stop will unload students from House Town Secondary, Leszeglán, and Squamish Elementary onto the same sidewalk that's being used by pedestrians and cyclists, as well as you have a lot of people coming in and out of McDonald's. So, and the sightlines are poor. So there's a hedge along the highway, or along Cleveland, adjacent to McDonald's, which is quite a hazard. Even a neighbor's son's handlebars got stuck in the hedge and he fell into the roadway. The sidewalk also is quite, not very big. And so it would be very easily as a child could fall or a pedestrian could fall into the road if there's an interaction. So those are some of the concerns that I have as a parent of Squamish Elementary. And did I miss anything, Colleen?
I think, just making sure, we just need to know, we need to get everyone on the same page, doing the same thing.
Can't hear you from there, so you have to come to the table.
So she's saying we just need to get everyone on the same page? Whether we bike on the road, do we bike on the sidewalk? Is there a separated access? We also have seen more development happening east of the highway, near Brennan Park. And so there's more and more people coming from that development that wouldn't access the underpass because they're coming from the other side. So.
Mayor?
Thanks, Teresa. Have there been, what sort of educational events have been done at your school for students or for parents that you can recall?
Perhaps Sarah Hain could speak more to that. We did a critical mass ride last year. I was one of the organizers of that. We had a lot of people show up and we rode on the street. But of course, we can't access our school because of the G Mar development from the road, so we won't be doing it this year because there's not a safe way to do that. And yeah, so I'll let Sarah speak to any education.
Thank you very much. And I didn't speak to the administrator from Squamish Elementary, so who wants to speak?
I can briefly, I don't have too much to say, but okay. Just as for...
And then also just to identify yourself and who you represent for our record.
Okay, I'm Sarah Hain, the Vice Principal at Squamish Elementary. I'm new this year, so I'm not as familiar with what's happened in the past. This year, basically, the education has kind of come through the PAC meetings and conversations. And with the new build in front of our school, there's been lots of conversations around that and the safety around that. So that's kind of been the focus this year, I would say.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah. So just making sure, just with the fencing and everything that's up at the new build, just making sure that we have visible areas for the kids to be going through, that we can see the kids coming in and they know which areas to go through. We've done lots of, we've had lots of conversations around that. So that's pretty much it for this year. That's been our main focus.
Sorry, this may have been a question for Teresa. Is, are people in your school using the Drive to Five, the drop-off points?
There is the others on the other side. There are people parking there and then walking.
And walking.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Next, Brackendale Elementary, followed by Mamquam and Squamish Montessori.
I'm going to stand and not touch on my phone. Mayor, Council, and the rest of the stakeholders in this room, thank you again for coming out today and re-energizing our...
Your name, sir?
I am Representative Friar. I am Brackendale Elementary School's PAC president. Again, thank you guys for the invite to be here today to meet with you guys. In 2017, Doug, we met with Gabriel Barnes with Haste and started a discussion around safe routes to school for Brackendale Elementary. We also met with Wendy Shard, who at that time Gareth was the community policing officer. And kindly enough, we had Squamish Trail Society, Mayor Patricia Heinzman, and many others come out and do our school walk-around. So for Brackendale Elementary, if you're looking at the screen right now, they developed what we thought was probably the best route to school for our students in Brackendale. Understanding that Brackendale covers a wide geographical territory and has one of probably the most major routes in Squamish Government Road, leading right to it, with no actual vehicle separation from essentially Eagle Run Store all the way up to Brackendale School. There is no actual vehicle separation apart from a painted line on the ground. So you were there too as well. We recognized that at the time that the Haste was being completed in a manner. And I do thank the previous council for doing what they've done. It was, I think there was a lot of strides made, Doug, simply because at the end of the day, they were planning two schools at a time and then implementing it budget-wise, which seemed to be working well. So you can see that Squamish and Garibaldi, I believe it was, or was it Mamquam and Squamish? They had gone before us. I think Brackendale was on the same docket as Garibaldi with respect to Haste scheduling and logistics for implementing or coming up with these plans and action plans. So they were doing it at a time, it seemed like, and implementing from the budget perspective, those items that they felt needed to be done in those action plans. So the reason I'm here today is to hopefully help you guys get back on track on this because Brackendale was one of those ones that we were supposed to be, we were supposed to receive the action items in 2019. And unfortunately, or fortunately, we have a new council. And so there's been some turnover. And again, I'm glad to see us speaking to this again today. There were some items in that walk-around that came about that were what we called easy wits, right? The action road, the soft curve there, some more painting, some more signage. But unfortunately, those things didn't come to fruition at this point in time. And I understand it's a budgeting matter too as well. So we've got a budget for these items, for these infrastructure items as it is. But right now, Government Road... But, right now, Government Road is, again, there is no sidewalks. So, it's nice to see that there is people out there with sidewalks, and your two pictures are beautiful. But, we don't have any. We have a painted line separating our kids from vehicles, and it's very hazardous. There is peril there for sure, especially at the end of the day when you have two different schools coming out, both Don Ross and Rockendale Elementary, using the same walking path. So, it was great to get out and do this and walk the community. But understandably, we did misunderstand, knowing or with a thought process, that we were going to put together an action plan. We never saw the safe routes, the second part of that, so the second and third part. We never were privy to that information. So, the safe route and the action plan. I know Gabrielle wanted to come back and present, she just didn't get an opportunity. So, we don't have those last two and three pieces to the whole puzzle as done. So, if we can get that, that would be awesome. But again, I'd like to see, hopefully, that we start to implement some of these budget items to get back on track and start seeing these things come to fruition for all the schools, including Rockendale. When we looked at Rockendale and the safe routes to school, you can see that there are one, two, what is it, four or five different crossings there. We noted that Dryden Road was one of the best crossings, and that getting to the west side of Government Road was more advantageous and had less peril to it because there was back roads and, you know, Cockwood is less used than Government Road is. But at day's end, you still have to cross to get to the east side of Government for a lot of our students. And a lot of them seem to be using that new Dryden Road, I'll say new because I've been here all my life, but the relatively new Dryden Road that connects to Government. So, you see a crosswalk in front of there that a lot of students are actually using at this point in time. So, our school was very advantageous in ensuring that we communicated our haste plan to our parents. So, not only did we have PAC meetings with respect to the haste program, but also to speak more to the pamphlet and make sure that it got into every, every single parent's hands. So, it goes out not only when we completed it, but at the beginning of every year so that they understand what those safe routes are to school. So, we all are actively working together to ensure that our students are walking and riding and biking. And I think, quite honestly, the numbers in this week of Bike to School Week, hopefully our numbers will bear that over too as well, because I think a lot of our students do tend to walk or bike or ride or scoot to school. So, thank you again for opening the conversation.
Thanks, Steve.
Dora, there's only one drive to five, and it is north of the school.
Yeah, that's a little bit of the lower parking lot, Don Ross. So, one challenge is with that, Karen, is that it's, there's a wooded area between that, or, sorry, between that parking lot and the school. And I'm not, I don't think, it's definitely underutilized at this point in time, simply because of the route from which you have to, you have to walk or traverse, right? So, it's not exactly kindergarten kid, it's not exactly eight-year-old friendly, especially with the amount of wildlife that we have in Rockendale. It's, I just, I can't see parents really wanting to drop their kids and walk that. If there was some more lighting or a clearer pathway in that drive five, I think we might make more headway with parents actually doing that. And it would alleviate a lot of our concerns with respect to parking lots in the morning because I'm sure Rockendale's no different than Garibaldi Highlands or Squamish or any other school in Squamish, that, you know, the parking lots in the morning and in the afternoons for travel pickup could be absolutely hellish. Right. Any other questions?
Eric. Approximately five to seven years ago, there was a district engineering, a school district collaboration on a traffic safety for school students event in Rockendale. I'm not sure whether anybody goes back that far, but I'm just wondering because it was a unique event, and other neighborhoods were jealous that Rockendale pulled that off to achieve that collaboration. Does anybody have any recall or experiences as to the worthwhile, was that worthwhile? Was it a valuable event to break together concerns and information and people?
Well, yeah, again, this haste, the haste program, it was absolutely thorough. Like, it wasn't just half-hearted. They had done half-hearted. It was, you know, there was collaboration pre-walkabout, and then there was a very collaborated walkabout, which included RCF officers, trail builders, municipal engineering and staff, plus the mayor. I mean, we all split into three or four different groups and walked everywhere that you could go in Rockendale to realize and understand what those safe routes were, Eric. So, you know, I don't know much about that event that you speak of, but this was done with the intent of directing council with respect to budget line items or infrastructure that was required to increase the safety for the kids to walk to school, which in turn would increase the kids' walking or the active transportation.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Steve. And I'll just mention, I'll give staff an opportunity, if you want to comment on some of these things after we've gone through the list, if there's any comments you wish to make about it. Is there any administrators from Rockendale Elementary? We didn't have a list.
Now, we're in.
You're in?
We're in.
Okay, next will be Mamquam, followed by Squamish Montessori and Garibaldi Highlands.
Thank you for having us. I'm from Mamquam, and I'm...
Could you just state your name, please, for our record?
Sure, my name is Keel Murchet. We live in Edgewater Government. I have two children, both Mamquam Elementary School. And we often walk to school. We often ride or bike, take the transit, whatever is the best way to transportation to be in the weather. The safety is a major issue for our family and as well as all communities surrounding that area. One of the concerns we have regarding the safe route to school is the increase of traffic. It takes us 20, 25 minutes to walk to school. And of course, during the winter months, if there's snow on the ground, there is no safe route to school. There is no way to walk, so you have to choose alternate options. The parents of Mamquam Group would like to see full sidewalks along both sides of Government Road and Mamquam Bridge, northwards. We would also like to see speed and pinch points on Tantalus Road, also the intersection at Garibaldi Way, across from Tantalus Road and Highway 99 and Garibaldi Way. Those are not, none are safe, and driver behavior is often very poor and very distracted. They would also like to see speed bumps, like the one at the Adventure Center, based in certain areas that are considered high-risk or unsafe. More signage coming to the school zone is needed, especially coming towards from Government and Mamquam, and also from Mamquam to Harrison. Those are also very high-traffic area, especially during the pickup time and the drop-off time. People are either rushing to go over, and they just kind of do a abrupt stop when they see kids pressing that cross button sign. So, we would like to see more signs going that, both those directions. And, safe route programs are great. We would also like to see that those sort of, we implemented, usually it's at the early stage of the year, we get the brochure, we get the, you know, talked about in our PAC, in our parent group, but none of that is being done on a year-round basis, I think, to encourage children to walk. And I walk myself quite a bit, and I've walked so many different routes, and I know there's, I don't feel safe enough for my kids to walk by themselves. I walk with them, and I take alternate routes when it's safer to take alternate routes, even though I'll get eight for school, or rather that their safety is more important than, I guess, being on time for school. So, we would like to see more implementation of, like, biking to school is great, that's what we're doing this week, and they're excited about walking to school. It's a good idea, it's a good idea to do this, when you're walking with friends and a lot of people, and you can just go out and walk. And of course, it's also safe, when you have so many people walking together.
Thank you. I've never seen a girl drive her kids to school, ever. So, you're a champion of this cause. Can you, again, I have two questions. What were those pinch points you were talking about and speed, please?
The speed and the pinch points on Tantalus Road. It's the intersection at Garibaldi Way and Tantalus Road, Highway 99, across Garibaldi Those are usually very high-traffic areas and very distracted for drivers.
That's me. You should do. And then, we invested some money in the Willow Park Trail, which was an off-road trail, to get through to that crosswalk and kind of avoid Government Road. Do you ever use that? Do your parents use it?
I use it quite often. I use it when I'm riding my kids to, like, to meet, because it's the safer route for them. I feel more confident if I'm letting them go by themselves to go that route. But, from where we live, in our perspective, we live in North Yard. It's a longer route, so it deters people from not going that route. You have to also know the neighborhood to take advantage of the dye going through Shannon Estates, go to that route. I think it would be great if there was more signage, if they have more, maybe for the school, to take their kids out on a field trip, do a safe route walk, depending on which neighborhood is more prevalent to that area. That would be great. I think signage is, you know, I know, infrastructure and all that, there's budget and all that stuff, but signage, those sort of things, encouraging walking buddies, as you suggested, was awesome, to do something that we can all work in as a PAC, as a school. I've walked Mamquam and Harrison Road by myself because I don't feel safe to take my kids in that road. And there have been a few times when me and the driver go, huh, because we were going that corner, and we see each other, and we didn't realize that we're both coming around the corner. So, I'm glad to see that that road is considered, is an improvement.
Thank you very much. Yep. And I didn't have a note of it, but is there an administrator here from Mamquam?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Next would be Squamish Montessori, followed by Garibaldi Highlands and Squamish Waldorf.
So, hi, everybody. I'm Fiona Miller from Squamish Montessori School. As Karen mentioned, the school up at Sky Ridge is new, so there's been no plans whatsoever in place. And of course, we've got kids coming from all over Squamish to go to the school, so we do use a lot of the infrastructure that's already there for the other schools to get to various places, and we use their safe routes. I live in Rockendale, and my kids frequently bike and walk to school, and they use all the routes that go down, and then they go across the overpass. So, there's a few things that I think that we need to see in place, if it's at all possible to add to the plan. And one of them would be a crosswalk that's needed at the bottom of Doward, because a lot of people do come from Rockendale, and they're at the wrong side of Doward Drive, and they need to cross over to go up the road on the pavement there. And there's a lot of traffic that goes quite fast and up the hill, clearly in a hurry to get their kids to school. And also, what we'd like to see there, if at all possible, would be a four-way stop sign, because you've got the traffic that goes through, that goes on to the main highway, and then you've got the traffic that comes along Tantalus, which is usually going quite fast. And so, there's been a lot of near misses with people who aren't sure where they're meant to be stopping, whether they're meant to be stopping, and there's a lot more traffic than there's ever been before. Another thing that we were looking into, and I don't know whether it's a possibility or who we should be contacting or anything, that's only just come to our attention in the last few days, is this drive-to-five aspect of the school. And it would be really fantastic if we could drop our children at the bottom of Doward Drive. It would relieve the congestion up in that area, because as you all probably have the same problem, we have parking issues up there as well, and drop-off issues and what have you. We have a very small area. And at the very bottom of Doward Drive, to the left, I think there's a polygon development area there, and it would be like the perfect spot to have a little car park that we could use as an area to drop the children off, and then they do that five-minute steep walk up the hill. So, if somebody knows what kind of process we can do to address that, that I would love to, it would be lovely to hear from you.
I think you just did it.
With, also, now there's, we're looking at the children who come from the Garibaldi Highlands, and they have been going through the woods and coming down Skyland Drive and down the Highlands Drive. Is there a safe way to get down for children down those, down the hill from Garibaldi Highlands? Because it's really very steep, and the cars go very fast down Highland Drives, to the point where, when you're actually on your bike, you get that woof-woof from the cars speeding by. And when you've got a little kid on their bike at seven years old, they can't really control a blind bike very well when that happens. So, if there's a way to deal with how we can get bikers to come down from Garibaldi Highlands to the lower land, that would be a great idea too. But they also go through the forest. So, they go from Conor, Condor, through the forest to Doward Drive, and we have loads of kids who are doing that right now. There's a few people who kind of get a little bit lost if we can't let the children go on their own, even the older children, you know? So, it would be really great to have some signage in there. I don't know whether you could put something up that said, you know, Doward Drive this way, Condor this way, or something like that. I know you can't really prevent the bears and the cougars eating the children. But, you know, at least if we can get them in the right direction, that would be a step in the right direction. And then, we, I don't know if you have anything like this in Canada, but in England, we have a cycling proficiency test for all children who want to bike to school. And what it does is it, it's like a four-week thing where each evening on a Wednesday or whatever, they have like a course that they attend on road safety, road awareness, what to do where, looking out for the various dangers that they find on the road. And unless they pass that cycling proficiency test, they're unable to bike their bikes to school. So, it's basically giving our children the tools to be as safe as they possibly can before biking. And I know that as parents, we try and do our best, but if your kids are anything like mine, they don't tend to really pay too much attention to what we've got to say all the time. So, I wondered if that was something that would be an idea? And I believe that in England, it was the police that ran that cycling proficiency test. So, you know, the kids really kind of like paid attention. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, my kids, one day, walking from home, they were going along Government Road back towards where we live, and there was, I had a seven-year-old, a nine-year-old, and I think another seven-year-old, so two seven-year-olds, a nine-year-old. They both got long, all got long blonde hair and everything. And there was a car that went by with a learner sticker on the back, apparently, a gray one, apparently. And it started, the kids started heckling, the three little girls, and they were terrified. And so, when they walked home, they wanted to go play on the unicorn, as most kids do on the way home. And as they went there, this car came back and started heckling them again. And they were really uncomfortable, and they haven't walked that road since because they were so scared. So, if there's anything that we can do around that, and I have no idea what can be done, but it's totally put my kids off from walking. They'll still bike, but they won't walk. So, I'm not quite sure how we can deal with that, but maybe it's just letting the schools that, maybe Don Ross and the older gears, know that it's not cool to heckle anybody, let alone young kids. It's hard to tell that they're young kids, but it was, you know, not a nice experience. And anything that puts them off walking and biking isn't a good thing. That's it. Thank you. Oh, did anyone have any questions?
No. Thanks very much. And is there an administrator from...
There is, but she's just leaving, and she thinks Fiona did a great job, so...
Thank you. Garibaldi Highlands, followed by Squamish Waldorf, and then Cedar Sky, Learn Connection.
Thank you, guys. My name's Mara from Garibaldi Highlands PAC. I have two young children at Garibaldi Highlands.
Did you have your last name as well?
Yeah, Mara Halaco. I have kindergarten and a grade two. We live up in the Highlands. We live at Braymar and Argyle, so we walk to the Highlands via the Boulevard. So, I know you guys have heard a lot about the Boulevard. The Boulevard has been a big kind of bone of contention for the Highlands. I think the major reason is, people don't realize it's a school zone. You get a lot of Quest students coming down that road very quickly, and if you don't know the Highlands is there, you're not aware it's a school zone. You guys have implemented a crosswalk, which has been great. You guys have implemented a crosswalk, which has been great. People still don't stop. You guys implemented the 30-zone sign, but it's past the crosswalk on the right. So you've already passed the kids by the time you see that 30-zone sign. So that's something to note. That sign should be a bug in front of the crosswalk because by the time you see it and it checks your speed, you've already passed the crosswalk. I know there is a community group here from Highlands Way North, which is great, and I'm going to let them speak to that road because that's a whole nother zone. But pretty much where the Highlands is, you've got the Boulevard, you've got Firth. Both have really busy roundabouts. And as the Highlands is getting busier and development is going higher in the Highlands, way more traffic is utilizing the Boulevard, utilizing that roundabout at the base and at the top, which makes it really tricky. Our kids love to ride their bikes to school, but we always go through the church because I won't let them go around that roundabout because cars come speeding through there and no one really knows how to use the roundabout. So there's a lot of confusion in that zone. So there's a lot of like car stopping, not stopping, not knowing where to go. So it's definitely, as a parent, that whole zone is avoided. Highlands Way North, whole nother question as far as people park where the bike lanes are. So you have to go on the physical road of speeding cars to get to the pathway or to go up to the front of the school. So one thing that we, as the pack, would love to see is school zone signs. We want a school zone sign on the Boulevard. We want a school zone sign on Firth. You don't know it's a school zone if you don't know the school is there. And the only way you know the school is there is if you physically go to that school, you live in the community and make yourself aware or you're right on like the Pia, top of Highlands Way North. So those are our major concerns. We're super grateful for the lengths you guys have gone to on the Boulevard and making those changes. But it's still, I see it every day that people do not stop even when those lights are flashing. We, as a pack, would love to try and get crossing guards there, to get parents to volunteer in the mornings and at the end of the day, if that's something that we can implement. I don't know if that's working with the police or who we need to work with to make that happen. But that zone would be really helpful to have a parent or a crossing guard physically staff there to actually help pick the cars.
Chris, maybe it's just semantics, and this is more for staff, but, you know, I understand we have the authority to set speed limits at different places in town. But in terms of a school zone and the 30 kilometers attached to a school zone specifically, can we decide where it's safe and not safe and how big the school zone should be? Or is that sort of legislated from school property lines where schools are?
Through the chair.
Do you identify yourself as?
Sorry, Chris Wickham, Director of Engineering. The, there are guidelines. The Transportation Association of Canada puts out guidelines that we follow as closely as we can. And because they're sort of evidence-based guidelines on what best practices are. So that's our go-to document. We can flex those. You know, they don't fit every situation, which is why their guidelines are not legislated, so we can flex them somewhat. But we follow them as closely as possible.
Thank you very much. Are there any administrators here? Is there an administrator?
Yes, I wonder, there's a community group from the same area.
I'm going to get to them separately.
Hi, my name is Erin Boavere. I'm the principal at Garibaldi Highlands Elementary. This is my second year at the school and I'm not from the community. I'm not from Squamish. So I kind of came in with a bit of a different perspective and experienced everything for the first time. So what I can say about our school, it's an awesome community school, lots of uptake for walking and biking. We have a lot of families who live within a reasonable distance for walking and biking to school. We also have families that come from out of our English catchment to access our French immersion program. So those are the families that typically do come by vehicle. So just to highlight some of the things that have happened in our school, we did education to our families because we had a reconfiguration of our parking and drop-off zone in the Highlands for this school year. So there was a bit of a communication blitz on best practice for dropping off and accessing the school. We also advised our families that, you know, they could drop off a little bit earlier or a little bit later at the end of the school day as we do have staff supervision on site. So we were trying to sort of spread out the number of families who dropped off in the morning in their vehicles. A comment made by, I think it was Montessori, about the education. We did just go through the bike rodeo, which does provide, you know, safety around using your bikes and also upkeep of your bikes. So that's another education piece that happens. So the intention of the parking lot and roundabout redesign was to deal with congestion at Highlands Way North and Portree. That was an issue that was identified in the HACE document. What I can say about that is it now requires a staff member before and after school managing the crosswalk and the flow of traffic. So we are able to, I do the PM shifts. We are able to move our families through and sort of deal with the congestion. Of course, it's weather-dependent. When it rains, it's usually a bit busier. I can also say that we have really appreciated the district adding the sidewalk and the parking on Portree. That's great. So just to highlight continued areas of concern, one of the areas being the Boulevard. I was out there this morning. It's not something that's normally on my radar because I'm typically worried about the front of the school. But I wanted to sort of experience it firsthand because I hear a lot about it. So it certainly is a busy thoroughway. As Mara mentioned, lots of people coming up and down for Quest. So speeding definitely is a concern. We have a community group that's going to speak to speeding on Highlands Way North as well. And as Mara mentioned, a lot of our families, if they do drive, will park along Highlands Way North, which then will sometimes have our own students walking out around and into the roadway to avoid the parked vehicles. And then just a general sort of lack of sidewalks, Highlands Way North, Thunderbird, above Glacier View. So I did a little drive around just to have a look again because I'm not familiar with that community area. And also just the number of access points to our school. We are right in the middle of an amazing community, which means that we have a ton of access points. So just the manpower that it would take to be present in all of those areas is a bit challenging. So those are all the concerns. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Squamish-Waldorf, followed by See the Sky Learning Connection.
Just to stop, how come, did we talk to the church about using their lot as a drive-to-five?
I don't believe we did. Short answer to that, it's possible that we could though.
It's a massive parking lot and there's a crosswalk there with a trail behind Highlands Way and it keeps the kids off Highlands Way North.
That's a good idea.
And also if we teach, if we teach drivers how to do the roundabout properly, it goes right into the driveway there. Anyway, just to stop. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Gabrielle Aldenhall. I'm the principal of Squamish-Waldorf School. In the last year, I moved to a number of different areas while I was waiting for my new build. So I've had an opportunity to bike to Squamish-Waldorf School from as far as Brackendale, the Mamcramp area, and now I live downtown. So we, of course, have a larger catchment area being an independent school. So the number of our children who are coming from the adjacent areas do love to use active transportation. And for those whom it's a longer drive, it does present more of an issue. We're enjoying Bike to Work Week right now and Bike to School Week. So, you know, people are thinking about, oh, how do we go? So I love these ideas of the whole drive-to-five and other options. So I was aware of the HACE project when it went about in Valley Cliff. However, love to have an opportunity to share some of those resources, put them in our own enrollment and information packages because those materials, I just, I wasn't aware of the materials that were produced out of that. So love to get copies of that. Along Westway Avenue, we've got the bike lane on the, I guess, the east side of the road. So for older students, they feel confident in using the bike lane. The younger students will use the sidewalks in that area. The driveways are, you know, definitely hazardous as you're biking up that way. So for students coming from the south along Westway, they're able to cross at the beautiful crosswalk on Maple and make its way up to the school. But then those students driving, or pardon me, biking north, if they're biking from their way home, trying to, you know, it would be nice to have a more northerly crosswalk, either directly at the school or perhaps at Juniper. Because we're just between Juniper and Maple. So, you know, there's a number of children who we see crossing in front of the school on the way. Most of them do use the Westway, pardon me, the Maple crosswalk. But still, I do see a lot of students just jaywalking and families across the way toward the bike lane. And then for those students who are commuting northward, there's no safe route unless you go south to the Maple, which is just because it's circuitous. Most students wouldn't be going around that way. And then beyond that, a lot of our students will walk down the pathway from Plateau and then down into the park that way. So those are also well-accessed. So as long as those are maintained, that's wonderful. So that's all I have to share for Squamish-Waldorf School. Thank you.
Two questions. Thank you very much. So my intent is to go, and I'm going to put him on the spot, to Mr. Price. He's usually never shy when a microphone's in front of him, so. He are a member of his team from the school district. And then I intend to go to the residents and particularly the residents of that one area. Oh, I beg your pardon. Holy Swamish. Sorry, I missed you here. See the Sky Learning. I miss Valley Cliff? No, I miss Valley. So Valley Cliff will be after you.
Hoxby, Hilary Queensna, Tenachantla, See the Sky Learning Connections. My name is Hilary Pink and I live in Denville, but I send my son to the Cultural Journeys Program.
Sorry, we can't hear.
Oh, yeah, can you just speak up a little bit? Even though the microphone's there, it doesn't quite go to the audience, so.
Do you want me to go?
All right. If that's easier for you, sure.
Hoxby, Hilary Queensna, Tenachantla, See the Sky Learning Connections. So I send my son to the Cultural Journeys Program as well as elementary and I'm the chair for the See the Sky Learning Connection, which is the umbrella for that school to part of. We appreciate the safe zone that you created from the fire hall up to the school. That's also a way of giving the kids a safe path. The point of contention really for a lot of parents is the light and exiting and coming into and exiting back onto the highway. There's a stop sign coming from the elementary school and coming from Valley Cliff, there's a yield sign. And then there's the lights from the highway on the other side without crosswalks for the kids identified. And it's basically just crazy sometimes trying to get out of there. Sometimes people are really patient coming from Valley Cliff and other times less so. And I'm not really an aggressive person, but if I don't take initiative trying to leave my stop sign to make the left to get to the right of the highway, I feel stifled. I'm just kind of stopped there forever. So I don't really know what the answer is to that, but I think sidewalks and maybe a different system of the stop sign and yield sign interaction would probably be better. That's basically the concern at this stage. I've seen kids kind of coming from Valley Cliff trying to bike up to our school and there's no real safe way for them to go through that little triad intersection.
Excuse me, I am a little, maybe a little bit hard of hearing, but just wanted to be clear, it's my neighborhood as well, that you're referring to the Guilford Drive-Clark Drive intersection.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Do you have any observations about the other intersection, the driveway down from Squamish and the fire hall as regards safety there for pedestrians? Is it used by pedestrians at all? Does it come up as an issue for you?
Well, it's nice because there's the safe path that was created from Totem Hall. So you can cross the highway, over the highway and then come up that nice road. And then because we're a program of choice, a lot of people come via bus. And the bus just comes into the fire hall parking lot and then the kids immediately go from there to the safe access route up to the school, which is a very short distance. If any children were to walk or bike or skateboard to the school, the intersection at the lights of Clark Drive and Guilford is likely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Is there an administrator?
Yeah, I'm here.
Go ahead.
My name is Greg Gordon. I'm principal of See the Sky Connections. Hillary's an amazing speaker, so I'm not going to say much. Just, we just really appreciate all the work. I was the acting principal of the Highlands two years ago when you guys did the Highlands route. That school needs a lot of support, absolutely. We're just really grateful with the walking route up the driveway because all of our kids do come on bus. We do have the Valley Trail right there. We do have the trail from Totem Hall. We're in a really lucky spot. We don't have a drive-to-five right now. It is straight-up hill from anywhere. But we do have kids coming from all parts of Squamish like the independent schools are. We just think this is a great initiative and I really hope you keep it going up all schools. My children go to Mamcramp School. Government Road is deadly. That road is so scary because the cars go so fast there. Just keep it up because it's a really important part. And I agree with someone else who spoke to her parents about, like, we're a biking community. We should have safety stalls where our kids don't have to worry. I have a kindergarten child, a four-year-old. I want them to bike tomorrow, but they don't.
Thank you. And I'll go to Valley Cliff. Didn't mean to omit you. I'll hear from Gunnison Anderson about that later.
I'm loud, so. Hi, my name is Kyla Draber. I'm from Valley Cliff Pack. I live on Plateau. We saw some great initiatives at our school. I think we got new crosswalks. Lynn will talk a little bit probably to the data. We still have the big congestion issue that I think every single school has. A couple of things in Valley Cliff that we noticed, just as community members, so it kind of is overreaching, just even having kids have safe places to play around their house, is we don't have a lot of sidewalks. And we have a big, there's a really big increase in population with people having their suites in their house. And so we have more and more cars parked on the street. So there's, you know, there's nowhere for kids to play. And that also affects on how they can get to school. Because you don't want to send out your little guy who has to walk on the road beside parked cars in order to be able to get to their street. So once you get to some of the main thoroughfares, like the end of Plateau, so out of Crumpet Drive or out of Crumpet Woods, there's a sidewalk on one side. Westway, it's sidewalk. But if you go back out into Valley Cliff, you'll see a lot of the same kind of like just even general congestion of just the number of cars. We've been here for seven years, and I think the number of cars on our street has almost doubled. Like, some houses have four or five cars because there's a variety of different needs happening in that house. And they don't have room, because nobody uses their garage. It's Squamish, that's for bikes, right? And then we're trying to get people out riding their bikes. So I have to have somewhere to store them. Yeah, so that's one of the major things. We have, we did the drop-off, we have a drop-off point in the back, but we're getting a daycare facility, so that's going to change how all that flows in the back, so we're going to have a challenge that way as well. And the other thing was like the speed limit. Crumpet Woods got a 40, and I'm really curious about that. There's 40 up in Crumpet Woods, but the rest of Valley Cliff is all 50. And it's like, Crumpet Woods, you can't get up to 40. You have to turn a corner soon, right? Like, it's like, really, you can't. Westway and Plateau Drive is a straight shot. Westway, at least, you have the school zone, so if people are paying attention, they'll be slowing down. Plateau is, it's pretty scary, because you have people who just think that it's, you know, they're right to go 50, as opposed to that's kind of a guideline. And it's a straight shot all the way down. And I live right at the little tiny corner. And so it's always been a big concern for letting the kids even ride their bikes on the street, because you don't know who's coming around that corner at what speed. So it would be nice, you know, Valley Cliff is a fairly small, this is kind of me being personal, but Valley Cliff is a small community, and there isn't really a reason to be going 50 than a lot of the community. And it'd be just a lot, it's an easy, no operations kind of thing. It's cheap. And yeah, so as, yeah, the school, we're seeing, the older kids are riding, the younger kids are still being dropped off, and that can be a variety of reasons. We're a big wildlife corridor, and so I think a lot of people have troubles, you know, sending their kids off to school on their own. One of our safer, one, the one route, that goes from Plateau down, across the street, across the little stream, like, I won't send my 10-year-old down there by himself, because it's a regular bear. And the bear is out sometimes way past his bedtime. He should be sleeping by then. And so you just don't know. Several people have come across the bear on that short, that short trail there, so that's not an option. So then it turns into a 20-minute walk for him. Seven minutes versus 20. And, you know, for parents who have to work, there's a lot of cultural stuff going on there, because if you have to get your kid to school, but then you have to walk back, but then you have to be at work. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that contribute to whether or not kids are walking or riding their bikes. I think that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there an administrator?
Hi, my name is Lynn Bouchard. I'm the principal of Valley Cliff Elementary. I think Kyla said a lot of it. We've been doing data. We really appreciate the pace last year that really supported us to keep the rhythm going. It did go home. We do talk about it at pack. We randomly do sort of little surveys with the classes, you know, the hands up. And one of the things we did recognize, as Kyla alluded to, is that the primaries tend to come by vehicle, and the older ones. Our bike rack is full, we have a scooter rack, it's usually full. So we do see the older kids coming that way. And that could be, as she mentioned, there's less of a sidewalk in certain places, the traffic, the car might be part of the problem. But we do appreciate the haste. I know one of the big things that we really liked last year is when the happy face-to-face was near the school zone. It was great. We actually had students doing data around it, and sort of just got a lot of conversation going. I think that was effective for our area as well.
So a couple of comments from the last speaker, actually, in terms of, you know, up in Crumpet Woods, that the curves and so on force, you know, they just limit traffic naturally, and so it's sort of almost easy to have 40 kilometers, because you just can't go faster. We're sort of, I think, making a transition from a focus around vehicles to active transportation. But some of these roads that we'd previously seen as collector, connector streets, and to some degree still do, and had, our priority had been to make cars go fast along those routes. Maybe we're starting to see a shift, and I think personally what I'm hearing today is some willingness to look at changing that priority. What physical sorts of things can we look at, have we looked at, for some of these streets which are straight shots right now, to slow them down? And one of my reasons for asking that is, I did get to do a ride along with the RCMP, and it was very eye-opening, the amount of time and effort and due diligence that goes into writing a single ticket. So, you know, I'm hesitant a little bit to rely too much on RCMP.
Yeah, maybe I want to provide a time for staff to respond to some of these points, and not in detail, but for just general, if we could just hold that thought and put that to that point. I wanted to hear from the rest of the speakers first before we went. So next on my list is going to be School District 48 representative, and then the residents after that.
This is Mohamed Azim, and he's our secretary treasurer, and he'll speak for the school district.
I'm not sure if Mr. Price's voice was picked up by the microphones. Probably it was. I'll hear it on the screen, but you could just repeat your name on the record, please.
My name is Mohamed Azim, and I'm the secretary treasurer with See the Sky School District. It's my first year in, just at the end of my first year. So, yeah, it's been amazing so far. And just on a personal note, my daughter is a kindergarten student at Mamamam Elementary, and my family were locals there. We did relocate to Squamish. We're currently living in Garibaldi, Thailand. So absolutely, it was discussed in both those communities. I'm very familiar with some of the issues and some of the great things also that are going on. So overall, the Safe Routes to School program is a very proactive, it's a very proactive program and initiative. And basically, the school board looks forward to working with the district of Squamish and various stakeholders on a yearly basis to review the safe routes and then come up with future projects and future initiatives from that standpoint. Overall, the school district, in collaboration with the district of Squamish, as a result of last year's Safe Walk to Schools project, completed six projects. And basically, in six projects, five of our schools involved five schools in Squamish. Example of one of those projects was in Squamish Elementary, working with the district of Squamish, we installed a gravel walkway from Buckley, and it was basically from Buckley Crosswalk to the school entrance along Jumar property line. And it was, like I said, it was a collaborative project. Some of the future, and this is just one example of the projects that were a result of this initiative that happens today. And just to let everyone know, following this meeting, what happens is my director of facilities, and also myself and the district of Squamish, we get together and we plan for future projects, such as this one, and some of the priorities. So some of the future projects that we're going to be focusing on, that haven't been identified today, but have, were identified last year, include off drop-off zone at Mamamam Elementary, and basically, south entry improvements at Valley Cliff Elementary. Overall, once again, just want to reiterate that we look forward to working with the district of Squamish for future projects, and we look forward to this on a yearly basis. So I want to thank everyone for attending, and also I wanted to thank the district of Squamish for inviting us, and also hearing from our stakeholders, our parent councils, and also the principals.
Thank you. So I know there are residents here. Are there some that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Julie Hazelbean Al, and I'm on Highlands Way North. And we really appreciate that this has sort of come to be a larger community issue. Me on Highlands Way North are concerned not just about the safety to school, but the speed in general. I would argue that at 1:00 on a Tuesday, it's not necessary to be at 30 kilometers, but 6:00 at night, when kids are coming to get to the field at the park or to travel the street, they can't do it safely. So just the speed on our street is astronomically high. People come off the boulevard, chase slingshot around the corner, they're going 60, 70, 80 kilometers an hour. My husband and I last year spoke with Doria and did get the speed tracking the head down the street a couple of years ago, and the visual of how fast that traffic is going is scary. That's like did, Kev, it's already, we have 15 letters of support of just needing to concentrate on the street all the time. It's, we need pinch points, we need, around that corner, we'd sort of, the little posts that go in, something visible to stop the traffic, to keep it slower, because we just can't get kids and bikes and elderly and dog walkers, they can't use our street safely at any point during the day. And so, you know, we sort of, any of the streets that are these straight shots are concerning, and we need to sort of help.
Thank you. Could you just repeat your last name, just so we got the record?
Oh, it's Hazelbean Al.
I'm sorry?
Hazelbean Al.
Thank you.
My name is Ulrike McCram. I live on Highlands Way North as well, and I just would like to back up what Julia just said. The speed on our road is tremendous. It's not, there's no respect for people who live there. There's no respect for children who walk along the road. And I have a very steep driveway that I have to back into, and to come out, I cannot see because of all the cars parked on the road, and people come barreling down. I've had so many near accidents, so I would like something to be done to just slow down the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Taggert, but I also live on Highlands Way North. I have two children at the Highlands Elementary, and we cross just at the new crosswalk, we're near the boulevard on Highlands Way North, which we were really excited when we got flashing crosswalk, but it doesn't work most of the time, and that's a problem. So the kids stand there, even when it wasn't working, people would just shoot straight through, it wouldn't miss anything. And now it isn't working, the cars don't see them. So a lot of the time, they'll just shoot straight through. There's also a problem with the culvert bed, or it isn't filled, so it needs to be filled just behind it, because there isn't really enough room for their bikes and a physical group for them. And I think that was, yeah, and just in general, we're wondering about speeds, speed cameras, whether you could put a speed camera on that. Because other than, I don't know if that's something that you do here, it's something we have a lot of in the UK, so we're kind of used to it.
So hot potato and merge Columbia on Tana right now.
But that would be the other suggestion. But it's really just practical things to get that working. We've seen a few workpeople come out and try and fix it, but it's not the case. And a culvert.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's Christine Good. I work for VCH in public health. We've been partnered with part of some of the schools for the HACE project, which has been great. As we know, through surveys we've done with schools, we need our kids to be active. Physical activity rates are going down, so this is really important project. I live on Highlands Way North as well, so I've lived there for 15 years. I've seen a huge change since the development of Thunderbird Creek with the amount of traffic, as well as now with the program of choice of how these are made. There's an increase in volume, there's increases in speed. I thank the district for doing some work at the Highlands, the Portree and Highlands intersection, but now it's a yield going downhill, and people just gain momentum and they speed. My child goes to Squamish Elementary for different reasons, but we biked today, so I'd like to reiterate, the biking down Highlands Way South was scary today. We went at a snail's pace, because one little pebble, she's 10, but not super confident in her bike, one little pebble, and she falls, and people are going 80 down the road. Skyline might have been a better choice, but it times. And, yeah. So I think in general, we're commuter town, people are used to the highway, this speed on the highway are one issue. But I think from a public health perspective, residential areas should be 30 kilometers an hour blanket. There's less injury if you're going slower than if you're going even 10, 20 kilometers faster. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else that wishes to speak? Yep, so, sorry.
My name is Portia Shans, and I'm from Garibaldi Highlands area. We live on actually a connector between Pia and Highlands Way North, those are the streets called Pitlochry Way. I like to see actually a three-way stop sign, one on, I guess, Pia. There's one already on Pitlochry in order to turn left or right onto Pia. So just like a three-way stop, because we live kind of in the middle of the road and in the middle of the, I guess you could say, Pitlochry. And a lot of the cars that come up from Pia, like, shoot around the corner again, and it's like a blind area in terms of like the speed that they're coming up and then turning right. So at least there's like a stop intersection, so that they can kind of check the point. And also, that's also a school route. I know a lot of people do take the sidewalk, but again, because a lot of students are coming up Pia and then coming down Pitlochry and then down Highlands Way, again, there's an opportunity for vehicles to stop, right? So it kind of slows things down. And then also addressing Perth, Perth is a relief, again, high traffic zone, and maybe even putting like speed bumps. Like, I've got a couple of points, just to slow down traffic as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name's Colleen Horsley. I have children at Garibaldi Highlands as well as Squamish Elementary. I'm really, we are really passionate about cycling in our family and getting our kids to school. Last year, we did 100% of days on bikes to school, and this year, we're at about 80%. So really, really strong advocates. And I think I look at it a little bit different than maybe somebody who only sends their kids maybe once a week or once a month on a bike. I don't know whether it's just desensitizing to the dangers that are out there, but see it a little bit differently. We also, we did live for five years in the Netherlands, where everything was, we were on our bikes all the time. So the kids are very confident to ride and be around cars and, just a different sort of biking mentality that we have going on. We'd have to be very eager to continue the conversation with somebody, anybody, whoever, about my experiences and how we approach it, and how we are making it actually work for us. Because I think there's really a lot of good that works for my commute from school to home, and home to school, and school to home, and, you know, 5,000 kilometers later that I've done on my bike. So I'd be very happy to continue the conversation.
Thank you very much. Please.
Hi, I'm Leslie McQuaid. I have kids at the Squamish Montessori School, and I live in Garibaldi Highlands. And I just wanted to point out one other area in Squamish that is a problem, and I know it's being discussed in other areas, but the Tantalus Road, and I think it's Garibaldi Road, where there's the Petrocan, Chevron. There's about five different driveways that come out there. The roads don't line up with each other. You do have a walking crosswalk there with a flashing light, but the cars are so frustrated in trying to get out from the various driveways, that they really don't pay that much attention. They zip around the corner, and now that is my current driving route, so I see it a lot more. I come down from Skyline and then around Tantalus. And there's been a lot of kids that, there's near misses on both the crosswalks going from the Petrocan, as well as across the other way. So just to look at that intersection as a whole, I know it's a big picture, but a roundabout or cutting off some of those driveways somehow, but just wanted to point that one out to see if that can go on the table as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? So now I'm going to go to staff, just, I wasn't expecting staff to sort of respond to the detail of some of these comments, but just any general comments you wish to make. Miss Gunn.
I'll, I'll start, and then Ms. Gunn can correct and elaborate whatever I missed.
And then before I interrupt, and then I'm going to go to council for wrap-up comments. You can prepare yourselves. Go ahead.
This has been a great opportunity, staff have been madly taking notes, and it's great to have that sort of check-in. I think we had a really, we've heard a lot of feedback, it was a really robust process that people really believed in, but we haven't had a chance in probably the last year to really check in on how things are going. So this has been great, and we appreciate it very much. Of course, the district of Squamish infrastructure was one part of the plan, as the mayor pointed out, and as other people talked about it. And there were some action items also for this school district and for PACs and education and all sorts of that, things like that. We have seen some of that going on as well, so I just want to, I want to call out, for example, the amazing cooperation we had last year with the school district on putting the paved path along between Squamish Elementary and the high school there. But that's on their land. They offer- They offered that up as public access so that it now connects downtown completely off-street into the Discovery Trail, which is also completely off-street for most of its route, all the way to Mount Carmel Elementary and the overpass. So that's, that kind of cooperation is really important. Really, really appreciated. Obviously, it's a big challenge to prioritize all of these projects. And having that robust process has really helped. There's different solutions in different places. I think we had a lot of, a lot of really, really good feedback. Some items, I'd like to draw people back to the safe routes to school. We had, we had some areas were highlighted as places that would be great to improve. Where there's a parallel route that is available and is highlighted in the safe routes to school is actually go that way instead because it's going to take us a long way to get to. Some of these are difficult infrastructure projects to improve, a major highway intersection when there's an overpass nearby, as an example. So keeping, having that conversation. I think staff are working on the, as Ms. Gunn said, on the Highlands Way North, Perth conundrum, what's best to be there and to not push all the traffic in one place instead of the other and just make it worse elsewhere. Interestingly, Highlands Way North was not identified as a safe route to school because there's the trail in the back right there. It's not identified on the map. So it's a, we need to revisit that and understand why people aren't using the trail. Obviously, if you're on the street, you have to walk along the street to get to the trail. So that maybe doesn't help those students who are actually on the street. And also maybe work with bylaw and understand why are no parking in the shoulder area, specifically to try to address this problem. It didn't seem to be working or without system enforcement issues. So there's certainly a lot of, want more conversation to have there. I love some of the conversations about, I worked with my kids to find this is the safest way for us. And I think that's, that's that opportunity to just understand how we make these living documents. Laura and I have talked about updating the maps with the work that we've done with infrastructure. But there's maybe also other ways to update the documents and the maps and make sure that that's an ongoing process. As well as, you know, the bike rodeo and other education. I get a surprising number of emails or calls throughout the last years as we've gone through this process about my kid was almost hit in a crosswalk. Some crosswalks, like the one that was just brought up at Garibaldi and Tantalus. It's a long crosswalk. Cars are turning into it. And there's an opportunity to be in the crosswalk when something kind of comes out of nowhere. Other crosswalks, it's a short crosswalk. And there was an example given at Highlands Way North. I'm stuck there, the cars aren't stopping. That's great, you know, to educate the kids. You don't hit the button and start walking. You, you wait until a car stops. And I actually hear a lot of, a lot of things, the opposite, that there's an expectation that cars will stop and the kids are having near misses. And it's pretty scary for us to hear. So anyway, there's a lot of pieces there. Councilor Peddignall mentioned traffic calming in general. We do plan to, we have a draft update to the traffic calming process that we're working on. We are planning to come to council to talk about that later on in the year. And to talk about what that means as far as, none of these things are free when it comes to traffic calming. So what's the budget process for that? And how are we going to handle that? And just feedback, feedback from council on that. Certainly, the Highway North, Highlands Way North, Perth is at the top of the current list.
Thank you very much. Go to council for comments.
I've been scribbling notes madly along with our staff. So thank you, everyone, for your very specific contributions. This has been really helpful. So these are the things that are on my mind as we leave this conversation that I will keep in front of mind going forward. Children are children, whether they go to public school or independent schools. So we need maps for our independent schools, whether that happens in 2021 or short-term. But it doesn't matter where kids go to school. They should be able to get there safely. If PACs don't have the action plans, we should make sure they have it when PACs change. And so let's make sure the PACs have our action plans from those safe walks. And maybe with an update to them that says, here's what we've done. Here's something that's going to be super challenging, so not short-term. Then here's where we're, you know, could prioritize in the short-term. So some sort of mini-update on those. It would be great for the schools and the PACs to know how they can access bike education or proficient sheet, profish, profish. I didn't even say that word now. If you want to say this, thank you. And someone brought up parent crossing guards. And so let's make that easy for people to implement. I don't know if that requires permission of the RCP to put in parent crossing guards. I think.
I think they have one over at.
Squamish Elementary has one. So I think that should be easy. I take up the feedback from our community that we can't just do Bike to School Week once a year. I feel like there should be a Bike to School Week at the first week of school. The, I don't know, start of spring, Bike to Work Week. But I think we should look for more opportunities. You know, maybe there's a Halloween Bike to School Week or. And along with that, we put enforcement blitzes in place. I think we need more of those happy sad signs. But I think we just need, you know, Quillum had cardboard cops holding speed guns. They were using those.
Already on my mind.
And I wonder if we have any extra cars just parking them with their lights on. So I'm trying to think of just visual cues to people that, you know, maybe they don't see an officer present, but they're, those cues slow people down. There's a police car. But somehow, we need to figure out, we need to retrain our community that. And so putting up better signage, I heard staff say that that's coming around our school zones is important. I'd love to see, I think Lynn said this from Valley Cliff. They did sort of some studies around the happy face sad signs. So it'd be great for the students to educate the parents of their school about how many people are speeding in the school zones. And a lot of those people are parents in a rush to get their kids to school. So it'd be great for our older students in elementary schools to do a speed study and go, yeah, like 30% of you were speeding last week. We're pushing all of our lives at risk. And who better to tell you that than your own child? So I think that would be interesting. Our highway crossings, I think we need signage there. Watch out for children. So as a parent who sends her children from North Yards to the Squamish Elementary School on their bikes, people aren't looking for kids on bikes at highway crossings, but we heard from a number of parents that kids are crossing the highway. And we've tried to avoid one of those crossings by using the Mount Carmel overpass. But we do do the Garibaldi Highway 99 crossing. And cars need to have something. I don't know if MLTI will let us put up a sign, watch for children. I think we need to put no posts on the Highlands Way North corner. And something needs to be done about the speed there ASAPs. And I think we need to get creative about creating those pinch points that aren't budget-heavy, like let's put some planters there. Little guerrilla gardening to narrow someone's Perth and Highlands Way North. Like, we don't need to spend thousands and thousands of dollars. We could go to Home Depot and buy some planters and put little kids' cardboard figurines and some flowers in there. I don't know. But I don't think we need to spend thousands on cement when we can fix the problem in short-term. And I would like to challenge the schools and the PACs to think of three ways in the coming school year that they can keep working on this program. Because we do need your help to change the behavior and communicate with parents. And a lot of you are already doing that. But if we can commit every September to thinking of three ways this year that we can really promote this program and do a critical mass ride or educate students or do a bike rodeo, that would be really helpful to us to try and really start to shift the change and build the confidence of our students and our parents. And certainly, my commitment that we'll keep working on this program for my term in office because it's really important.
Thank you. All right, Councilor Anderson French.
I noted on the Valley Cliff Elementary Safe Routes to School map that we had up earlier that the Cedar Valley Waldorf School was not indicated. That's not news. But my question is, are there constraints relating to budget or policy direction in a way of including our private schools in the next round of mapping and action plans?
Can you speak to that? So we had budget to do six schools. And if we were going to do the whole process for these schools, we would need to have budget to do that. Even just updating them. So for Waldorf, we could possibly tweak the map without too much expense to work for them to tweak the Valley Cliff map. It would still be a small budget item, but it would be much smaller than doing a whole new school. But for the new Montessori school up north at Squamish there, we would have to probably do the whole process all over again. So that would require budget.
I just reminded myself that Halsan Secondary was also not included last time. Perhaps that might be a consideration for us the next round.
Typically, the group that we work with only works with elementary schools. But that doesn't mean to say we couldn't. We absolutely could do middle school or high school.
Councilor French.
So some really great work has been done to get us to where we are today. And I'm clear that there is more work for us to do moving forward. My best point of reference for this entire issue is Perth Drive. It literally has it all. Very limited sidewalks, ditches on both sides for the most part. Some of them are quite deep. And year-round, have water flowing in them. It's a raceway. It's exactly 1 kilometer from the bottom to the top. I know this well because I live at the bottom. My parents are at the top. And cars that are coming, well, down for sure, but up as well, very quickly seem to get to 80. And the, when the reader board was on that street, it clocks somebody doing 132 kilometers an hour. You know, it's mind-boggling. And I think that, you know, Stephen talked earlier about the quick wins for his area. The quick win for that spot, in my mind, is the 30K zone on other side of Porch Tree. It just makes total sense. That section of Perth is, let's call it half a block from the school. And I'm not too sure why we don't already have a 30K zone in that spot. So all of those thoughts on Perth, I think in my mind, translate to every other street that's got these issues. And my one final thought is around individual responsibility with speeding. It is up to each and every one of us as a driver to make sure we're doing a safe speed, no matter where we are. Jasmine Hensel's Green Kids, in my mind, were a great way to address that. A few years ago, she brought a bunch of these little green plastic kids with flags into the community, gave them away. And some of them still survive today. There's not very many. But I thought that they did a really good job of just reminding drivers in the moment that they're in a place where kids are playing and they need to slow down. And then I also think about the Drinking and Driving Campaign many years ago that created social pressure that just made it wrong to get in your car drunk. And we, as neighbors, were reminding each other that it just shouldn't happen. If we had that kind of culture around speed and school zones, we'd do a great job.
Thank you. Councilor Peddignall, Councilor, I'll put myself in.
So I've been here for a decade. And one of the things that's always, I don't know, never quite understood in DC is the idea that there's a 30 kilometer from 8 to 5 on a school day. And then other times, you can do 50. In Ontario, most places, it was 40 kilometers in a school zone. It's a little bit fast, but it was 24/7. And the idea was, if it's near a school, there's kids around there all the time. And so you go all the time. From, to my mind, if we could do something along that lines, that would make a whole lot more sense. It makes it simpler. It takes away the opportunity for, so I didn't realize it was a school day today or whatever. And I think just in terms of training people, the idea of, you know, whether we set on 30 or 40, it's all the time. You know, on the weekends, there's kids everywhere on the streets. And so people should be going, I think, all the time in a lot of these neighborhoods. Similar to that, you know, a lot of these routes are on collector, connector streets. And so maybe a 40 kilometer hour or 30 makes sense on routes as well as zones. And, you know, the other thing I want to raise, it's students and student safety is an important piece of this. But I think there's an equity piece, a climate change piece as we are trying to shift away from vehicles. And I think we want to say that biking, walking is the quickest, easiest, fastest, cheapest way to get around. And the more we can do that, I think all these things work together to support that. So I'm really interested to see how far we can push that and how quickly.
Thank you. I grew up in Brackendale, riding my bicycle to school every day. And sometimes home for lunch and then back to school. And spent a lot of my time moving around the town by bicycle. So this issue is, I'm very aware of issues when I come across them. And it's great to hear all the perspectives from the neighborhoods where I don't, I don't frequent as often. And just around the corner from me, there was the new community way. I think it was called Maple Crescent, Eagle Run Drive. And it makes so much sense to me that we have these lower-speed areas. And really, ideally, everywhere as we feed into collectors. How, just, can I use a question on this one quickly? Are the, is that implemented elsewhere? I mean, I had Hemlock noted. I'm like, I wonder if that was a, is that? And what's involved in that process of establishing that?
Sure. So there are several neighborhood ways proposed in the Act of Transportation Plan. We have implemented two of them. One is Cottonwood and Eagle Run, as you mentioned, in Brackendale. And the other one is Hemlock here in Valley Cliff. Our plan is to do a review of those. We want to put the speed board up there and see how much of an effect it's actually having. Are people actually slowing down like they're supposed to? Once we've done that, we'll decide about implementing the other ones that are in the plan. Now, the other ones in the plan are typically meant just to connect. They're like connector routes that provide a part of the bike and pedestrian network overall. So they're not on streets that are just a little cul-de-sac or a little loop. That doesn't really go anywhere. That's a different issue, not to say we couldn't do that. It's just not in the Act of Transportation Plan currently.
Thank you. No, we obviously have lots of work to do here. And I hear around the council table, lots of support for continuing to push this issue forward as it relates to schools and general mobility and safety in the, in the community. And I'm looking forward to our tour that we're going to be on this afternoon. And I'm sure some of these issues are going to tie into that as well. So thanks, everybody. And thank you so much for everyone that gave their time to come out and provide the feedback for us today.
Thank you. So as I, as I said earlier, this is something that's been going on in different forms and different speeds for about 10 years now. And it has to keep on going. I don't think there's any debate about that. And it probably will always be going. I doubt we'll ever get to the point of perfection. This is something that's just going to be an ongoing project, I think, for the district. Some of these are significant infrastructure issues. Sidewalks are not cheap. I think we all know that. Some of these things, we can take advantage of new development coming on. Some are major policy issues such as speed limits and traffic calming that are really applied district-wide in some sense. So I think, as Mr. Wickham said, this is a check-in for council. This is an opportunity to hear the community and your comments. We've got them all recorded. What we didn't write down are on the tapes. I'll go back to these tapes from time to time to check in things to make sure we didn't miss any of these points. So we have got your points. And it'll be up to council now and staff to start moving this forward as best we can and probably have another check-in. But I want to thank you all. You are the people that are engaged. It's almost like preaching to the converted up here. Really, what we're doing is trying to drive change. We want changes in our culture as it relates to how people get to schools safely. It will be up to your kids. It will be up to you, to administration, to all the stakeholders. And you have to spread the word and start talking to your peers. As Councilman French said, it's like drinking, driving. You know, it became a taboo. It was nothing to be proud of. And that happened very quickly, actually. And it just was peer pressure, I think, that had a lot of part to do with that. So get out there in the community and keep the pressure on. And I'll give the last word to Mayor Elliott.
I'm wondering if staff heard some ideas today, whether it's planning, engineering, RCMP, or bylaw, of things that could be implemented in the short term within our current operational budget. Because for people here, the budget was set last year. And so a lot of these ideas we hear today will have to be implemented in 2020. But I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to come back to council with some, maybe not today, but just an update on things that we can do differently within our current operational budget that would help address some of the concerns we heard here today. And if that's possible to bring it back to the community in the fall before our summer break.
Mr. Baker, did you have something more broadly to say about, to answer that question? I have something like more bylaw-specific.
We certainly could do that, I guess is the answer. Some of the things, some things we already are working on. So we wouldn't be starting new as of today. We are already working on them. But if you'd like a detailed update of us, the points that were raised today and what we're doing about them, we can do that.
I could just add to that just because we happen to have a lot of interested people here now who might not be at that committee at all if we go ahead with that. For example, the Clark Drive and Highway intersection, that whole intersection area has been completely revamped this year, including a lot of active transportation work. We are working on a hundred-place connector to connect through to shorten that route. Hoping, there's land issues and everything, so we're not 100% in control of the schedule on that. But we're hoping in the next months to have the land issues figured out and be able to punch that through very quickly to shorten the route from the underpass through. The link down from the, oh, sorry, it won't be this year, but down from Hospital Hill, that's the ultimate link, because again, because of land. There's the Judd Connector, we'll be doing this this year as well. And a number of other things that we didn't hear from. But there's also some, so those are things that are kind of already going. There's also some ideas like the extending the culvert to make more room for everybody to stand at the crosswalk going across Highlands Way North. I wasn't aware of that. We can fit that one into the.
Well, because I think those are the kinds of things, rather than, we've already kept people later than they thought they were going to be here. So rather than trying to cram it into this conversation, just have time to go back and think this through and just bring back the list. And we can, we have everybody's contact information that's here today because they all got an invite. And then we can sort of do the report here to council and then send them out that list. So they don't need to come, but then they can see that at least we've actioned some of the ideas. And I think that would be more useful to me than trying to absorb more today versus having you guys come back, you know, before the summer break and to say, here, here's what we think we can fit in based on the great ideas we heard today. So that would be.
Yeah. And I'm going to draw this to a close because this is, as Mayor said, we're beyond the time we told you we'd be here. But this is not the end of the discussion. And so I think the mayor has more control over the agenda than I do. But I think it's likely that this will come back between the whole meeting over the next few months with some immediate things we can do and perhaps some longer-term solutions. So with that, I'm going to recess this meeting until 1 o'clock. The council will meet outside. Bicycle's ready. Thank you very much for coming, folks. Calling this meeting back to order and welcome council to our 2019 cycle tour. And I will turn it over quickly to somebody else who's going to lead us. Just go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm Dora Gunn. I'm a sustainability coordinator with the District of Swamish. And as an introduction to our bike tour, I just wanted to provide a really quick overview of the Act of Transportation Plan, which we have spoken about in council briefly before, but not a lot. And then also talk about the routes that we're going to take. So the district retained urban systems to help us develop our Act of Transportation Plan, which was finalized in 2016. It included, the development of it included two public events, three stakeholder committee meetings, and a survey. So there was definitely a public consultation in the development of the plan. The plan includes the proposed cycling and pedestrian networks as well as recommendations on policy and bylaw changes, education, and enforcement. To date, we've been spending about $700,000 annually to improve the infrastructure related to act of transportation. And a final note on that plan is that we have been taking a very close look at the downtown portion of that plan, both developing a bit more detail on some of the streets that are in the plan as well as potentially considering some streets that were not included in the plan. So we're planning to bring a proposed revision to that downtown portion back to council this fall. So bike tour today, we're going to focus on cycling infrastructure, not pedestrian infrastructure so much. We're just looking at some of the core parts of the network, not going into neighborhoods. We'll look at projects that have been built, some projects that are in process, and then a few future projects as well. The plan is generally to ride north on the Discovery Trail, cross at Industrial, and then ride south on the Corridor Trail. And if we have time and feel strong enough, we can ride up the Corridor Trail to Clark, the Clark 99 intersection there. So we'll take a pause down the bottom of that hill and decide how we're feeling and whether we want to do that last portion of the route before we continue back to the underpass and then into downtown. And so that's all I have as an introduction. Any questions?
Questions? I just wondered whether we have a scheduling or an update on the status of the downtown entrance study.
I can give a, through the chair, I can give a very brief update that we did run into a challenge with data. We had to figure out a lot of sources and sinks of traffic. And it's pretty complex in the downtown core, businesses and homes and how things have changed. And recently broke through that logjam with a bit of a big data solution. And so we're rolling again. So we're looking at, end of this year, sorry. This will put you on the spot.
Yeah, of course. I think we'll be, like, we're hoping to have something to present by the fall in terms of, and we need to do also some stakeholder engagement, some public consultation for the entrance study portion of it, which may not now happen until the fall. It's sort of, yeah, most likely. But by the end of the year, we're going to have it all wrapped. Let's put it that way.
Thank you.
Anything else? Are we good to go?
Yes, I think we're good to go. I think everybody needs to go and get their bikes, so maybe meet out front and.
So now I will recess the meeting. And we convene on the street in about 10 minutes. Calling this meeting back to order. We're at the intersection of Third Avenue and Bailey Street. Take it away, Dora.
All right. So at this stop, we're going to talk about two things. One is Third Avenue, and the second is what we call the gateway, which is this kind of general zone over here. So Third Avenue is one of the proposed north-south downtown bike routes. The proposal in the Act of Transportation Plan is to have it being protected by groups. So that means there'd be some barrier, either curb or some barrier between the cars and the bikers. So we will be getting to design pieces of that in the coming couple of years. We haven't even started designing that yet. There is a, there's a possible interim solution, which could be to widen pavement and remove parking to allow sort of an on-road bikeway. And also, even as it right now, it does have a little bit of a downhill as a north-south bike route, just on-road. So that's all I have to say about Third Avenue. And then I'll pass it over to Laura to speak about this project here.
Yeah. So on this particular site, this is a CN, over here, this is a real, and that is, has interested a lot of people. It has been a rezone. So there will be an opportunity to maintain pedestrian and cycling path through here and across the tracks. And to make improvements to that path, we're going to make sure that that right-of-way is captured when, as it progresses. And like I said, make sure it's twisted, it's a paved path, and lighting.
All right. And the next stop that we're going to be stopping at is near the new, a bus shelter that's being built. And so we're going to be talking about the improvements on the whole land as well as the Discovery Trail.
We'll recess the meeting to that point. Okay, I'm calling this meeting back to order. We're now at the intersection of Carson Place and Buckley Avenue, adjacent to Hauson Secondary. Take it away, Dora.
Thank you. So the trail we just rode is a part of a partnership between the school district and the District of Swamish. There was three projects that happened last year as part of that partnership. The trail was one, the sewer lift station, which is also on district property with another. And this bus shelter is a third. So there's a pullout and a shelter. The district has provided funds for the students at Hauson Secondary to actually build this shelter. So the students are building it as part of our campus infrastructure. I also wanted to talk about the Discovery Trail a bit more generally. So the Discovery Trail used to run and still does on the other side of the school here. And then it connects up and heads north. Since we had this opportunity, we are now able to slightly realign what we're calling the Discovery Trail. It's a new routing. So the new Discovery Trail routing will go along this trail, down Carson Place, through where the youth center is, and then the affordable housing project, and then connect up with the old routing as it was before. It solves some land challenges doing it this way. It also provides better connectivity for the kids on this property. The advantage of the Discovery Trail is it provides a really safe, away-from-cars route for kids and everybody to travel north-south on this side of the highway. And ultimately, it can connect all the way from the Juvar Development, just south of the schools here, all the way up to Mamamamam School. So once you cross the Mamamam Bridge, there's another trail that connects right in and takes you all the way to the Mamamamam School. So it provides an amazing off-road route that we need to improve. So this part was built last year. We're working on a part this year, which is just north of where the affordable housing site is. And we will talk about it some more up there. And then hopefully, as soon as the affordable housing project comes on, we'll be able to build that part. The middle part will be missing. Once we get that affordable housing project going, we'll be able to build that part there.
Councilman Petten Gill.
Dora, and I didn't get to it back there, but is there a reason why we wouldn't just proactively rezone? That section down there is trail or park or something, rather than wait for the developers to do things along? So when you're our last stop.
Oh, so honestly, I am not a planner, perhaps you have had a planner here. But through the development process, there are opportunities to work with the developer to get the routes through there. So I don't expect there's going to be a problem getting those routes through there. But I'm not a planner anyway, so maybe it's direct to me.
I'm just going to add to that. So all of our discussions so far with that developer have been based on the idea that that multi-use path needs to be, like, that connection needs to be maintained. They understand that. They know that. They're planning to build it. They've figured out where their buildings are going to go based on how to stay out of that area. And it's the, I mean, that is typically how we secure those right-of-ways. So it makes sense to do that in this case as well.
And I guess I'll just, I'm not sure if I understand that portion of the meeting, but it's private land. So, which we're trying to go by. It's private land, so we could expropriate it and turn it into a park and all that sort of thing, in which case we'd pay top dollar for it. Or we could wait, if we believe it's coming forward in the next year or two, and we believe it, you know, we have an interim solution, then we can wait. And then because zoning is totally up to the discretion of council, then if they want to raise the value of their land by asking for a rezoning, then they can, as part of that, provide CACs and rights of way and that sort of thing. So that's a way for the president to get that, the government dipping into the, the, of course.
Yeah. And I guess I was just wondering about rezoning it, even though we wouldn't own the property. We'd say this is our expected intended use explicitly now and then leave CAC discussions to other things. And just, is there a reason to consider going out, or maybe that's just not the best practice?
Yeah, not best practice. Yeah, I mean, best practice is to, is to allow the developer to rezon, but with conditions that we've worked out without. So the next stop, we're going to discuss the neighborhood ways. So we're going to stop at Britannia and Midill. To get there, we're going to go up the.
Why don't we all just follow you, Dora?
Sure.
Can you hop on the bike and we'll kind of, I mean, tell us, but then let's make sure you're up front.
Sure, this one's probably the trickier one. It's okay. But yeah, so the next stop will be at Britannia and Midill, where we'll discuss the neighborhood ways.
We'll recess to that point. So I'll call this meeting back to order. We're at the corner of Midill and Britannia Avenue. Take it away, Dora.
Thank you. So Britannia Avenue is one of our proposed neighborhood ways. All the neighborhood ways identified in the plan are streets that are low volume, and they're at appropriate widths, and they're part of a bike network. So they're not just an isolated street off somewhere. They actually provide some connectivity. In this case, the connectivity runs all the way through the little forested piece up there and through to Progress Way. So it provides a link up and down here. Two of our neighborhood ways are in place, as I mentioned this morning, Cottonwood Avenue in Brackendale and Hemlock in Valley Cliff. And this year, we're planning to review those and see how effective they are. And if they are proving to be effective, then we have a number of other ones identified to install. They're relatively easy to install. They generally involve a reduction in speed and a bunch of neighborhood way signage. So there's not a lot of, not a lot else to it. The ones that are in the plan that are proposed, that haven't been done yet, are Axon Road, Dryden Road, Reed Road at the Honey Lane, there's a little connection there, Britannia Avenue here, a part of North Ridge Drive, and then Victoria Avenue. Victoria Avenue is one that we're actually looking at a design for. It's a bit more complicated when it's downtown because we have to allow for parking and other uses down there as well. Any questions about neighborhood ways?
Is this a nearby example of the signage that you're using for these?
So unfortunately, we're not going to stop at one of the neighborhood ways today. But I can absolutely provide an example of the signage, council.
I have a quick question about the section that we just came up, and I think is scheduled for paving or improvement at the rate this year. I don't know what we call that, the laneway that turns into Gander Avenue?
Yes.
So would that involve leaving that whole lane way? And what divide would that be to the, to vehicles and pedestrians, cyclists? Or is it, yeah, so you're speaking about that.
So our next stop, we're actually going to talk about that section that we're working on this year. So if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Where do you want to take us next?
So the next stop, we're going to go back here onto the Discovery Way portion that we're building this year. And we're going to stop just before the entrance to the forest up there.
We'll recess to that point. Thank you. From the heart of Dentville, adjacent to the entrance to the Discovery Trail. Dora, over here.
How's your respectee for the stop?
So, so Jesse.
Hi.
Mind coming in a little bit? So I don't have to yell.
Hi.
Thank you. So I'm Jesse Campbell, Project Manager. So just to mix things up a little bit, I'm going to talk about a little bit more from the project delivery construction side. So as was asked earlier, we are upgrading this section of the Discovery Trail. It's going to go from, this will be the northern boundary of the construction. The southern boundary would be kind of at the south end of Dentville, that laneway that we came out of the forest at. So it seems like a bit of a strange section in that it's going to be a paved section. And on one side, it's going to be gravel, and on the far side, it's going to be gravel. The reason that we're not doing the section over there, as Dora mentioned, is there's another development project happening, hopefully, within a few years, that's going to connect that piece. Also, this piece is, does have some uniformity in that it's not a trail. It's actually a shared roadway. And what our objective is, is to create a multi-youth use pathway. Does anybody, hands raised or shout out, know how wide our multi-youth pathways are?
Three meters?
Three meters. So I brought a tape measure to measure out three meters. So to give you an idea about our width. Can I hold it? There we go. So that's three meters. But you got to remember, we have to add shoulders to most of our rural pathways. So really, it's really more like four meters. But then we're going to put lights on this too, right? So I usually give another meter for the lights. So that's going to be the footprint of what we need to build our path. And that's not including like clear zones from trees. So you need really some extra room for vegetation and trees. So the challenge on this section and the last section is where do we put five meters? So the challenge on this section and the last section is where do we put five meters of trail infrastructure? And so one option was we could remove trees, and I don't think there was a lot of support for that. So what we've decided on this section is we're going to reduce this low-volume laneway down to one lane. And how we're going to divide it is we're going to put barrier along the middle of this road. We're going to go around the corner, and thankfully, around the corner, there's a bit more room beside the trees. So we're going to use some of the existing shoulder, and we're going to widen the asphalt out a little further on the far side. Once it goes to the laneway, then we're having to go into where all those blackberries were. So it's going to be, so it's kind of, each row is going to be treated slightly different, and it is because we're trying to get this fairly large footprint in there. The other, one of the considerations we had was certainly working around the trees. We've got to be careful about staying away from the roots. The roots will pop up through the asphalt, and, you know, in a few years, we're having to rehab the asphalt. You'll see some of those scenarios on the corridor trail. Other considerations is, sometimes it seems easy to build a trail, but the reality is we're going to have to actually create more structure to the actual trail. So we have to, you're going to see us removing some of this dirt to create a better gravel. And then we're going to pave about two inches of asphalt on top of it. Our separation will be like a concrete roadside barrier. We're going to leave some gaps in it so that homeowners or people coming from different areas can't access the trail at two different points. Question?
Do we have any DFO damage sent back?
Yeah, so it's, we do. It's called, in this case, it's called the riparian zone. So if you're within 15 meters of a creek, you're within the riparian zone, and there's certain obligations for projects. In our case, it's going to be notifications. We have an environmental consultant on board. It's going to be a notification to DFO with a plan of how we're going to address any potential siltation or gravitation materials from our construction site to the creek.
Have you done a danger tree assessment along this section?
Yeah, so part of the reason that we're moving into the road is so that we don't have to deal with trees. Having said that, there are some potential danger trees. They're mainly been identified down through here. Typically, the Parks Department or the Public Works Department deals with danger trees. Although, like everything else, when we do capital projects, we try to team up with Public Works and try to do these things all at once. So even though we're stopping here, and maybe next year, maybe the year after, we'll be getting to this section, we'll remove whatever trees we need from the trail, but at the same time, we'll do the danger trees.
The other section that's in the, in that laneway there, on that three meters plus five meter width, you're sitting here pushing into the blackberries, is it going to be, is that shared with the resident access through there? Or is there going to be a one-lane sort of resident laneway access in a separated way?
It'll be, it'll be separate. It won't be separated, but there'll be, well, there'll be a laneway as existing. The entrance at Gambier is going to change a little bit, because we have to get around those trees. There'll be like a grass buffer and then-
Last week, when we were talking about evacuation routes, I think I just mentioned that there are parts of our trail that might be able to be used throughout for vehicles if we need to do other parts would be challenging. As we build more of these trails, is that top of mind? Is it just something where we can, we think about that?
Honestly, it's something that hasn't been discussed all that much, so perhaps we need to discuss.
So you said vehicles, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I used to work for Ministry of Transportation, and, you know, this trail is not designed for vehicles in that, you know, the cornering, and we're going to be going around trees, so we're not disturbing. Like, it's just not, honestly, it's not appropriate. You know, you can get a maintenance vehicle in there, but as far as moving a large number of vehicles, it's not appropriate, in my mind.
So where's your next one?
Thank you. So the next stop is going to be just at Industrial. It's quite a loud stop, so we'll stop there and see if we can make it work there. If we can't make it work there, we'll just quickly have a look there, and then we'll go to the following stop, which is over on Lager's Lane.
Okay, a little recess now, to that point. So I'll call this meeting back to order. We're on the Discovery Trail now, corner of Industrial and Highway 99.
Thank you. So we're going to talk about two things here. One is a connection, the highway crossings to link up the Discovery Trail, and the other is a development project over on the other side. So we have two projects, actually, one here and one at Commercial Drive, to try to link up the Discovery Trail in a more safe way than it currently is.
Our active transportation plant, network is actively being used.
Yes, which is good. So right now, it's very tempting for riders to go straight across the Discovery Trail here, but it's very dangerous because of the highway off-ramp. And so what we want to try and do is encourage riders to use the crossings at the highway. We did discuss the possibility of a mid-block crossing further this way with MOTI, but they were not supportive. So what we're going to do here is create a wider curb. So there will be no longer a Jersey barrier, but instead a raised curb that the bikes will go on to get to the crosswalk. The same on the other side, and then the same again on both sides at Commercial. We're also contemplating adding a fence, either at the edges in this case, or at Commercial, it could be in the middle, because there's a median there, and that would actually prevent people from going straight across, where it's quite dangerous. Yeah, like that. And this is a very important link here, both for the Discovery Trail as well as to provide the east-west connection. So oftentimes, people from Dentville are trying to get to Brennan Park, and this is the route they would take, to cross here and over to the corridor trail and up to Brennan Park. And now I'm going to pass it over to Laura to talk about the development project on the other side.
Yeah, so this is, this is a truck route. Just reminding everybody, that's why we see these giant vehicles coming through here. On the other side of the street, there's this new car wash that's gone in. So what we do with new developments is that we decide what they're going to do about their frontage. In this case, there was an existing sidewalk, which was fine, but we saw an opportunity to help to work on our east-west connections, because that's something, we actually have some really good north-south connections, but not so much actually connecting them together. So we saw an opportunity here to turn this sidewalk into a multi-use path. There isn't a lot of, there isn't a lot of pedestrian activity here, so it seemed like an appropriate place to try the multi-use out. Because typically, you'd see, like, the very confident riders will probably still ride on the road, but it will be attractive to, like, families and more timid riders, and could be shared with pedestrians. And then, as you can see next door, another site that's under development. So this path is going to continue at least to Discovery Way, which is a start. It could be a while until it, say, connects all the way through to Queensway, but this is what we're doing, is just opportunities to be as lots, redevelop, redo the frontages. So once people get to the intersection, so are we going to add signage around here that, like, bikes crossing? Or instructions for cyclists or?
It's possible to add wayfinding signage directing cyclists from this trail, let's say they want to go to Brennan Park. Anytime we're talking about signage in the highway right-of-way, though, we have to work with MOTI, and they have strict regulations about what they allow for signage, so.
Can we put it on our trail, though, so there's like a little sign, like, you're going to go here and then here?
Yes, absolutely.
Kristen, there.
What's our authority on the east-west roads versus the central authority? Like, if you want a bit of greenery up the middle here, just to make it a little more pedestrian, bike-friendly type of thing, do we, can we?
So anything that's in our road right-of-ways is up to us to determine how we want to do it, as long as it follows appropriate safety protocols. But yes, we could do things like that, not in the highway right-of-way, though, so there's a lot.
Sorry, can I clarify? So I used to work for Ministry of Transportation, so technically, like, up to, it's around a kilometer or so, MOT can actually prevent certain types of things. So where, any major changes, you're supposed to defer to them. The reality is that small changes that do not create any kind of safety hazard or impact the highway operations, they're happy, they're happy leading to us, but they, there is some authority, they do some authority for working within a certain distance of the highway. So it's, my question's been answered, thank you.
I just have one more thing to add about, the reason I mentioned earlier that it's a truck route is that we have to be really conscious of turning radiuses. Like, as much as it's tempting to narrow down lanes and put in things like boulevards with, like, medians, which I would love to do, we have to be conscious of the fact that trucks need to be able to turn, and it's quite awkward and not easy to accommodate all those things, even though as much as we want to have everything.
Where's your next one?
All right, so the next, we're going to cross across the highway, bike along Finch, and we're going to stop just at the corner of Finch and Lager's Lane.
Call this meeting back to order. Once again, turn it over to Dora. We're at the corner of Finch Drive and Lager's Lane.
And I'm going to turn it over to Jesse.
All right, thank you. So we're going to talk a little bit more about projects, past and future projects. So we're going to focus on lighting here. So last year, the district installed trail and road lighting along the corridor trail here to Brennan Park. We do have future plans to continue this lighting all the way to the Adventure Center. Lighting projects are very expensive, and so every year, it's, we have to somehow prioritize them. We decided not to continue the lighting this year, but it will be in the plan in the next few years. As far as types of lighting, we, the district engineering department and planning are working together to develop standards for the types of lighting. Certainly, when we build our own stuff on trails, we can be fairly consistent, but it's hard with a lot of the different developers coming in, wanting different types of lighting for what they're doing. So we are working on having fairly consistent lighting for the district right now. The other thing with lighting is that there's a lot of discussion around Kelvins. Kelvins are the, kind of the color of the light, the colored temperature, some people refer to it. So previously, our LED lighting is what we're installing now, was previously quite a cold color. If you look on our light bulbs you buy for your home, they're often called daylight. We're certainly moving towards a warmer Kelvin-colored light, a warmer light. And I think part of that is because we're getting a lot of feedback from the public about they want a warmer feel to the lights that we have on our system.
Does a Kelvin, doesn't necessarily impact visibility or the brightness of how far you can see, or does it?
Yeah, so I'm certainly not an expert. My understanding is that it does. So that's one of the, one of the challenges, is that, you know, if it's not, the light's not penetrating as much, then potentially you need more lights, which is a higher infrastructure cost. So my understanding is there is some, that does play a role, but I'm not sure to the degree.
Do we do any sort of dimmer type thing, like, so around dawn dusk, maybe it's a bit brighter? 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM, maybe you turn a little bit of light in the area for the sake of the wildlife? Or is it sort of, it's on or it's off?
I'd love to answer that, actually.
I know we did at Rose Park, I remember that. We got, we worked with Easy Hydro on that and on our rates and all that sort of thing. So I believe we have carried that on as our standard throughout, because that was our first major lighting project.
The other thing we want to mention is fiber optic conduit. When we're putting in light conduit, we're often putting in a fiber optic conduit. We do have a kind of a master plan about where we want to put fiber optics, and it's basically to connect all the major municipal building nodes so that we're able to have our own internal network, rather than rely on external providers. And so, like I said, every time we put in light conduit, which is generally anytime we're building a trail now, because they're really great corridors. So for example, on the Discovery Trail on How Sound and the one we're building in Dentville this year, we're putting light conduit and fiber optic conduit underneath the trail.
Are we considering putting speed signs up for people on e-bikes on the corner of the trail? Or just generally around town?
We haven't delved into that topic yet. The province just updated their guidelines, and I, my understanding was that they said that anything that's a pedal assist e-bike is allowed on all trails. If it has a throttle or, you know, the other way, then it's more restricted. But as far as signage, we haven't contemplated that yet.
I know that Whistler's working on their policy. They feel like we should. I've already started to hear stories in the community of people ripping down this trail and almost running into toddlers. So I feel like sooner rather than later, we should put up, hey, e-bike users, manage your speed, or don't surpass something, rather than waiting.
I'd say that would probably be encompassed with a general speed limit or recommendation, because those pedal assist e-bikes, assist to thirty, to thirty-five, kind of cuts off somewhere in the middle there. And pure acoustic bicycles, easily achieve greater speed as well. So it might just be certain operator education regarding this.
All right, so the next stop is, we actually have a nice uninterrupted biking segment now down the corridor trail. And then the next stop is going to be down near the underpass. So we're going to go through Rose Park and then stop before we get to the underpass.
There won't be an ambush this year. I have it organized now. It would be so easy to telephone my colleagues and get them to meet us there, but not for this year. We understand that there's progress underway.
Now you're working from the inside.
Still smells like a trap.
So we will recess this meeting for the next stop. Call this meeting back to order, and we're on the corridor trail at the south end of Rose Park. Over to Dora.
Thank you. So we're going to talk about two things here. One is the Scott Crescent development, and the other is what I call the pinch point on the corridor trail. So we'll start with Scott Crescent. Scott Crescent has come in for their DP for phases one to four, which will trigger their amenity contributions for those phases. They have quite a number of proposed improvements that are going to help the access up into Valley Cliff. So I'm just going to list those off. There's a corridor trail connection at the highway, so it'll replace what is there now, but with their entrance. A three-meter path along the waterfront, so it'll go right along what we're looking at across the way there, across that piece of waterfront. There's going to be a pedestrian's bridge just over here, across the upper Mamamam Line Channel. There's going to be a three-meter trail heading up the lower part of Scott Crescent. They actually call that Upper Scott Crescent, because the lower part is the flat part and the upper part is the part that goes uphill. And then after that, heading up the hill, there's going to be an on-street shared bike pedestrian space, so heading further up the hill. And then with Phase Four, they've agreed to contribute $100,000 for additional trail improvements, and that's where we'll get to improve the really steep part of what they call the Valley Cliff Trail that comes down. It'll be able to do the, a little jog over to the side, and which will be a much more gradual route down from Valley Cliff on that trail. So we'll get that $100,000 and be able to do that improvements, once they get occupancy on Phase Four. Any questions on that?
Is there any chance to, because that's the most desired feature? Is that what, last one you've mentioned, is there any opportunity to have at least an interim solution to have that trail going through the north side, connecting the district-owned property and the switchback corner to Scott Crescent?
So we're going to have more discussions with them about what this area will look like as they're in construction. So we haven't had those conversations yet, but we're going to try to ensure that we can maintain as much connectivity through the site as possible during construction. So that goes for all the trails, including the one you're speaking of.
Do we know where the pedestrian bridge is going to take off and land from?
It's right about there, like, within view. I'm not sure of the exact spot. I do have a map. We want to pull it out.
I'm just curious. Yeah, I hadn't heard. I know there's been some discussion about having it, for example, even land over here.
All the plans I've seen more recently are just slightly further up. So like, within what we're seeing there, kind of maybe in alignment with that yellow over there.
So maybe it's pulled in the water, because it is actually a hydro right-of-way.
We have not, yeah. We have not seen any designs at all for the bridge itself, so we do not know what they're proposing there. And there's actually a number of steps they're going to have to go through with that bridge, so that'll be a bit of a process, but we haven't seen designs yet.
Do we know if people are using this trail at night?
This trail?
Yeah, now that we've put lights on portions of it.
I do not know. I'm not sure if anybody else knows.
Aside from our in-traffic council and staff members. Aside from our in-traffic council and staff members, um, because, you know, we heard earlier about how expensive it is to light. I'm just trying to, obviously if there's no lights, people might not use it unless they have lights on their bike. But if we light it, does it generate use? So is there a way to measure night traffic?
That anecdotal is because I ride to the pool a lot, you know, three, four times a week. And so I certainly have seen a fair number of people, dawn, dusk and that kind of thing, using it. Can't say in the middle of the night though. So whether it's more or less, I don't know.
So we are looking into purchasing a counter specifically for pedestrians and bikes. It would be a mobile counter that we can move around and I I'm not sure. I assume it has timestamp on that information, but I will check to make sure before we purchase it that it does so we can get that information.
Carmen, then Eric.
As we view that data of the night of the nighttime usage, I think it's important to keep in mind that, um, the security of knowing that should your day not go according to plan and you have the adventure, your plans change, that should you need it, it's there. You're far more likely to start that journey at noon if you have the lights. You know that security of having that lit path is there, uh, even if you don't use that. So, um, I'm sure that discussion, uh, has to get data that goes to that, but that's something I do.
Yeah, with respect to the connection between Scott Road and the corridor trail and the bridge, uh, the design will be brought forward to to council and the public for comment. There are two considerations that keep coming up. One is safety because for this, for people, cars entering the highway from here, it's it's, uh, they have to be totally alert on the highway and the cyclists or pedestrians are also gonna be have to watch for. So safety is consideration. One question is, does the district own that corner there or is that the developer? There was a land swap, I believe.
I'm sorry, I don't really answer that question.
Yes, so we haven't actually, the plans presented thus far have not given a detailed plan for that intersection. It's something that people will be watching for. The second thing is that corner is notorious for collecting litter because of the wind patterns and the stores across the road. And so another design consideration is how to maintain it. It is really quite notorious for collecting litter due to wind.
That's right.
So with the first part of the question, the trail and so forth, that would be part of the DP application?
Yes.
So that will be a public proposal. I see. Anything further? Next step?
Okay, so, um, I'll talk a little bit about the pinch point and then we have a decision to make about how energetic we're feeling. So assuming that we decide to bike this direction and up the hill, uh, we're gonna pass through the pinch point, which is a really narrow section of the corridor trail. It's actually so narrow that we can't get our trail machine through there, which makes it really difficult to maintain, especially in the winter. Um, and so it's it's it's, uh, between the highway and there's a Jersey barrier there and then on the other side there's a cliff and and that creates the pinch point. So we are, this year we are looking at, um, what is needed in order to, uh, potentially increase the space in that in that location. We aren't able to go over to the highway side, um, due to the MOTI spacing of their lanes. They just, there's no space there. So we'll have to go the other way. Um, so we're starting into that process this year.
Okay, thank you. So we will recess to where?
Well.
It's a decision.
So now we need to make a decision, but perhaps we could recess and then discuss that.
Okay, take a soft line. Meeting is in recess. Okay, so I'll call this meeting back to order with the last breath I have here. We are at the corner of Guilford Drive and Burner. Over to Dora.
Uh, over to Jessie.
Alright, so, um, we're hoping to do, um, extend the corridor trail here. So where we wanna extend it is from where it comes out. It currently comes out on the park, but it just comes out onto a shoulder. We wanna continue a three meter pathway all the way along to the intersection. And maybe this year, if we have budget, uh, maybe in the subsequent years, it's connected all the way up to where the fire hall is because the corridor trail continues, keeps going to the the gondola and the park and all that. Um, this was a fairly late addition to our program. Um, once the, it's it's tied very closely to waterfront development. Um, once the waterfront development got its final ized with this permitting, with the sand rail and everything, um, we decided that it was important to get this connection done this year. Um, we feel that the waterfront people need a way to see if we can get to downtown if we're going on the highway more. Similarly, you know, we don't really want to make traffic on on one side of a shoulder as people are trying to get to the waterfront. Um, it's it's on an administrative transportation right away. So there's certain permitting, um, procedures we need to go through. This makes it a bit more complicated, but but certainly possible. Um, it's quite an expensive piece of of infrastructure because it's on a very steep slope. So we need to build, uh, lock block retaining walls in order to get that extra width. So it is relatively short, but it is a it's an expensive piece and and probably part of the reason it hasn't been done until now. Uh, the other thing is we've talked about it a bit. We certainly try to look at other infrastructure, uh, when we're when we're working on a capital project. Um, we know that there's some concern around the alignment of Clark and Guilford. So we certainly did, uh, when we were looking at the widening of the trail, looked at whether there's any synergies in improving the, um, intersection alignment right here. Um, in the end, it just, it's, there's a lot of moving parts. It's it's a really complicated, um, intersection. So we are gonna be looking at more detail, um, at the intersection realignment at a future date. It's not gonna be tied to to the corridor trail. Um, we are building the corridor trail, so it it will allow for the most flexibility in in what we do at future stages. The other piece I didn't mention is utilities. There's always utilities in our roads. So, um, it it can be really complicated. There has to be utilities. So, um, when we're building this this trail, we're gonna do some sanitary and water work as well at the same time.
Jessie, where does the, uh, the overpass to, um, to the waterfront landing take off from and land?
Not an expert. I think it's gonna be perpendicular. It should be fairly perpendicular. You can actually see, um, there's a gap in the trees. Next time you drive by, you can actually see some of the, uh, the railway overpass they're building, but it should be fairly fairly.
And will that have pedestrians and cycle, uh?
Yep, yep, it will. There's gonna be, I believe it's a three meter multi-use pathway. So similar. So it'll be a good connectivity from waterfront all the way up to our new connection then on the corridor.
On our way from our last stop, we did go through that pinch point and, um, I didn't share it the last time. During the winter, I was driving south, uh, northbound on the highway there, I witnessed one of our residents trying to navigate that section and it was actually snow above the barricade. So she, this lady had some bags of groceries. She was walking to the grocery store and as I go past, I just witnessed, whoa. So that piece, uh, obviously there's a during the good months where you wanna make sure it's safely passed back and forth with two kids trailers or something, but getting the machinery in there is is, uh, is super important to make sure that gets, can actually be reliable as much as it should be. So, yeah, just a little bit, still behind that one. Much needed.
I believe that Burner Drive from that intersection down there with Clark up to the top of the Burner Drive is owned by Vancouver Coastal Health. And I'm wondering about what kind of agreement or arrangement you have for, uh, working with them for safe routes to school improvements because that is a safe route to school. And it does have some parking congestion and some issues that are kind of increasing for us that use it as drivers and pedestrians at the Hilltop House end. But what kind of agreement do you have? We had a Vancouver Coastal Health representative with us this morning, but is there a protocol in place?
There is a protocol in place. We actually installed some new, um, bus stop pads up there recently. So I had to go through that process to install those. We have a a right-of-way agreement with them and we actually, we're required to notify them. We don't actually have to ask for permission on our road right of way for that piece. So we are able to do improvements along there.
I see.
But typically we would work with them.
Does this also mean we can have bylaw enforcement along there as well?
I don't know the answer to that question, actually, but I can look into it.
We have some cars that are parking perpendicular to the road. So the traffic coming down the hill can't see anything in the way of usually large pickups or vans that block the view of both pedestrians and seniors and Hilltop House, uh, patients, clients crossing the road as as on foot.
Okay, and they're parking on the which side that you said?
They're right underneath the hyd- hydro pole at the top end of, uh, where there's the smokers', uh, tables and chairs.
Nothing else? Where are we going next, Dora?
Alright, so we're gonna go back down the hill that we just climbed up.
Yay!
It's more fun on the way down. Uh, we're gonna go under the underpass and then we're gonna stop shortly after that. Right in front of, there's a a fence on our right-hand side that has a big development sign on it.
Yeah, just making one more observation. Often we find, uh,
Eric, cycling around for the camera.
Sorry. Cyclists are coming up the hill and not stopping or pausing before they cross. I didn't check to see if there's any signs to encourage people to do that, but I think it might be an idea. It happens quite often that they're just simply, you know, the younger youth, just ripping right across the road without pausing before they cross. The visibility isn't that great.
It's an interesting point, you know, because as I ride around these trails, more and more we're using them as replacements of streets. And to me, that will bring along some of the regulation we normally see with street traffic. Uh, not to the same level, but some of these advanced notices, some regulation. So I think that's something that we can start thinking about in the future for these commuter trails.
Would that, for example, might apply to where we were at at the corner of Industrial Way and the highway. Some sign it or?
And the one you just pointed out here. Anything else? So I will recess this to where are we going to?
So just, we're gonna go under the underpass and then stop on Pemberton there pretty shortly after that.
Okay, meeting is in recess. Call this meeting back to order. We are now in Pemberton Avenue, close to Highway 99.
And over to Jessie.
Alright, um, so through our our active transportation planning, we've identified that we, the district needs a connection from Pemberton to Hunter Place, which is just kind of the next street over. Um, we're working, we've been discussing with, um, a few different, uh, the landowners in in this area, uh, to see, to work with them to get a connection, a trail connection. Our plan is a three meter, again, multi-use pathway, similar to what we've been riding on today. Um, it it's quite challenging to deal, um, to deal with property owners. It takes a very long time. Um, there is a development proposal, as you can see in the sign back there, um, in this area. So, um, as as Chris mentioned earlier, we are, it's the most cost effective to get the land through the the development rezoning process. So that's certainly our preferred, um, and long-term, uh, choice. However, um, as that process is not necessarily gonna go through or may may take a long time, we are looking at other shorter term options, um, to get a temporary pathway through here as well. So, uh, we're working on this year and our hope is that at some point this year we're gonna have, um, an agreement in place and and our intention is to to, um, put in a connection here through this year.
Just add that, so I've measured the distance coming from Hospital Hill to down to here to get to the school. And if you come this way, it's about a hundred meters longer. So very, a very small amount longer. And this is the slice, if we can get through here, it's a way safer route for them than coming across the Cleveland 99 intersection.
I would just add to that, that there is more and more development going in in the Loggers East and we're doing a neighborhood plan and all sorts of things in that area. So a long-term plan maybe to, and we've started exploring what it might look like and through downtown entrance study as well to 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 look at the Cleveland area. But right now, by far, the bulk of the students are coming down from Valley Cliff and we have a lot of people staying in the area at this point.
Eric, there is a parking lot, uh, adjacent Hunter Place down here and I'm not sure the owner of that parking lot is. Uh, if you're gonna put a trail on this side of railroad tracks, it would presumably link to that parking lot of or around it. Um, one of the things I suppose puzzles you're trying to solve. The other thing that occurs to me, by the way, you will not be able to put a trail, uh, through here until the industrial operations have relocated. That's a given. But, um, on the other side, we have waterfront landing with 950 odd housing units and those students will be coming to the same schools. So earlier this morning, we heard the issue of crossing the railroad tracks, that that's not desirable. But that is gonna be necessary for those students. They're gonna cross the tracks here and use the trail that you built. Uh, so these are, the waterfront landing pedestrian movement plan should also, of course, factor into this. And I note that in their last plans, they hadn't got that far as to look at pedestrian movement towards the schools from waterfront landing. Presumably, the most popular route will be on the new bridge that we're hoping to have built adjacent to railway bridge.
Uh, I believe with waterfront landing, we worked on bussing into their agreements until the bridges are created. So that students are getting bussed where they need to go versus crossing the railway. We recognized that when we did the rezoning. So that was part of the plan.
So Dora, next steps?
Alright, so our last stop is gonna be just a little bit further along on Pemberton. We're gonna come across the railway tracks, but not cross Loggers. So we're gonna stop for Loggers and talk about Pemberton.
And the meeting is recessed. Follow this meeting back to order. We're at the corner of Loggers Lane and Pemberton Avenue. Over to Dora.
So we're gonna talk about Pemberton Avenue here. I'm gonna start us off and then Ben from Public Works is gonna talk about some maintenance issues. Uh, so Pemberton Avenue is a really important east-west connection in downtown. It connects the underpass to the rest of downtown pretty much. And at the moment, the best north-south route is Third Avenue. So people need to get to Third Avenue to use that good north-south route. In the future, there may be opportunities down Loggers Lane to have a good active transportation route as well. So, but still Pemberton will need to connect people to there. So right now, we, um, have a contract with ISL to look at a conceptual design of Pemberton. Uh, in the active transportation plan, the recommendation is a protected bike path. So we are working with ISL to look at either a bidirectional path on one side, the north side, or unidirectional paths on either side. The design that they're looking at right now is a, a design where the bike path is raised above the curb. So you have the roadway, a curb, and then you have a bike path and or sidewalk depending on the design. Uh, so they'll be coming back to us with that conceptual design and a cost estimate for the two different designs relatively soon. We anticipate that to be a relatively expensive project though. Um, so we may need to look at some interim solutions, uh, to to bridge that gap. And I'm gonna pass it over now to Ben to talk about, um, some of the challenges with snow and drainage, um, related to these projects.
Yeah, so as people know, like, snow sometimes in the winter in Swamish, it rains a lot and sometimes it freezes as well. So probably half or even more than half of the work Public Works does in the winter, or at least our roof management department, it's snow and ice removal. Um, separated bike lanes and or raised bike lanes can become a challenge because it requires additional pieces of equipment that can fit in the narrower lanes to remove the snow and or lay down, salt or brine. Um, and then the additional challenge of not having a boulevard beside the road to put the snow on with the plow. Now the plow has to put the snow on the trail and then the trail machines come along and put the, uh, the snow over. So you're, it can result in some duplication of work and additional effort needed. So coming up with a design and working with the engineers to have something that is, makes our operations efficient is the best case scenario.
Eric? Ben, are we considering different plowing equipment rather than different road infrastructure?
Yeah, so in 2018, um, the district purchased a trails maintenance unit that does help us, um, keep the corridor trail clear. Uh, it plows, it salts, it sands, it brines and it mows. So it's a bit of a misarmining and that's one solution we're gonna look at to deal with that initial challenge.
But there's not, but, um, being a truck version will help us deal with the clearing to?
If 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 there's a delineator in the way, then we'd take out a delineator, um.
We can't snow blow down to the second story box.
You say jump, we say how high.
So I guess the the takeaway from this is that some of these really important connections present some really interesting design challenges. Whether we go with the, with a design that works really well for for maintenance or whether we go for a design that works maybe less well for maintenance, but put our money into more equipment to deal with some of those issues. Those are decisions that are gonna be coming to us in the future, near future.
This is all a supporter to us. There are often large vehicles, trucks or vans parked perpendicular to Loggers Lane, just like I mentioned, is nearing at the bottom of Hilltop House driveway. And for both pedestrians and and drivers, it's really a hazardous corner. You cannot see what's coming when cars are standing so far out towards the curb, uh, blocking visibility. It's an issue we need to bylaw this corner perhaps.
We recently had an internal staff meeting about that exact spot and determined that there's enough of the roadway that's ours that we should be able to limit perpendicular parking. And so we're going to look at doing that to be an extension. I'm excited to hear that. So we are now going to head back to Municipal Hall.
So I will look...
Keep this bike?
Are we gonna have another chit-chat at Municipal Hall?
Um, we could, if that's what...
I won't terminate the meeting yet then, so it's recessed in front of Municipal Hall.
Okay.
We open the meeting, any final comments from members of council? Seeing none, I will look for a motion to terminate. Counselor Herker, Second Counselor French, all in favor? Motion, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.